Good morning, everybody. We are in session. Good morning, everybody. So can we have roll call, please?
Thank you, Chair Madron. Supervisor Arroyo.
Here.
Supervisor Wilson, sorry about that.
Present.
Supervisor Madron.
Here.
Supervisor Bone.
Kaiser.
Supervisor Bushnell.
Good morning.
Thank you.
All right, and please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great, thank you very much for joining us. We have a big agenda today, and we have a number of proclamations, so we're going to read those first. But before I go to that, do we have any modifications to the agenda, CIO Hayes?
Good morning, Chair Madron. There are no modifications today.
Wonderful, okay. With that, I will say that there is a time set on our agenda for 9:30, and I do not believe that we're going to get to it by 9:30. It'll probably be more like 10 o'clock, because we're going to go ahead and go through the proclamations first, and then we will start with that time set, which is our Measure Z, and I imagine that a couple of you might be here for that, as well as some of the proclamations. So we'll go ahead and get started with those proclamations. And the first one I have, well, actually, we have a resolution. I'm not sure if you wanted to read that one as well. Okay. So Supervisor Bone, did you want to read the resolution honoring Jason Benji?
No, I don't want him to retire.
Okay.
And I'm not sure what this crowd, if they want him to retire or not. I've decided, it's always a toss-up. No, I'm more than honored to be asked to do this for Jason. I've known Jason a long time. Actually, I've watched him coach for years. He's kind of a model of some of a public servant that goes out and serves the public off-hours, too, and I think there's hundreds, if not thousands, of kids that have benefited from that. It's a resolution of the Board of Supervisors County of Humboldt. Whereas, and I loved his dad, whereas Jason Benj was hired as a correctional officer on Officer One on July 3rd, 1995, by Sheriff Dennis Lewis, and whereas Jason was promoted to the position of Correctional Officer Two on June 30th, 1996, whereas after only a few years working with the department, Jason was promoted to the position of Senior Correctional Officer. And whereas on March 31st, 2013, Jason was promoted to the position of Correctional Supervisor, and whereas on March 16th, 2017, Jason was selected as the Sheriff's Compliance Officer for the Sheriff's Office and was instrumental in updating and creating several policies for the correctional facility. Whereas on August 12th, 2018, Jason was promoted to his current rank of Correctional Lieutenant. Whereas in 2021, you've been around a long time when there's a whole bunch of whereases. Whereas in 2021, Jason was selected to temporarily fill the role of Correctional Captain for several months in the absence of a signed correctional captain. And whereas Jason has held the specialty positions within the Sheriff's Office of Transportation Officer, Senior Classification for two separate three-year appointments, Defensive Tactics Instructor, Team Leader in the Specialized Emergency Response Team, and Direct Supervision Instructor. And whereas throughout Jason's career, he has maintained a strong tie to the community by supporting local youth through his incredible coaching efforts, having coached youth sports for, it says 25, but it's actually 34 years. This has allowed him to be a role model and mentor for so many kids in the community, many of which he still maintains bonds with as adults, some that actually assistant-coached with them, too, I notice. Whereas Jason has been active throughout his entire career in educating teachers, youth, and parents on the dangers of gangs by conducting countless presentations in the community, receiving numerous commendations, and creating a gang intelligence gathering team within the Humboldt County Correctional Facility. And whereas Jason has been involved and led the Humboldt County Gang Resource Intelligence Team for several years, including being recognized by the Humboldt County Superior Court as a gang expert witness for court proceedings. And whereas Jason will be retiring on April 28th, 2023, after working for the Humboldt County Sheriff's Office and serving this county flawlessly and community for almost 28 years. Thou therefore be resolved, the County of Humboldt Board of Supervisors, thank and commend Correctional Lieutenant Jason Benj for his incredible contribution to not only the Humboldt County Sheriff's Office, but the entire community of Humboldt. Thank you.
There you go.
There you go, all right. There's people out there that I'd like to take this time to recognize them, how much they helped me in my career. Starting out, two of the best sergeants I ever got to work for, Sergeant Gratz, Sergeant Evenson, great guys, taught me so much. Mitch, just how to be a leader, how to talk to people. Sergeant Evenson, how important it is camaraderie amongst a shift and look out for people that you worked for. Yeah, I'm going to forget people, I'm sorry. Some leaders I got to work for, two of them are here, Captain Cherbelini and Captain Wilkinson, my mentors. Wow. This is emotional. I didn't think I'd get like this. It was like, I'm retiring, this is happy time. You know, when times get like this, you got to turn to humor. So I got to tell a story about Captain Cherbelini. When I started, I went to the Corps course, and they talked about command presence, and they showed this guy that was built like Sergeant Gratz, V-waist, uniform pressed to a T, shoes shined, and that guy had command presence. And I was like, holy crap, I'm never going to have command presence. I'm built like an offensive lineman. I could iron my uniform, I could do that. Shoes, 28 years, I finally kind of got a shine on my shoes. I'm never going to have command presence. What am I going to do? Well, about a week later, I had a class, and it was taught by then Lieutenant Cherbelini. And she came walking into that class, and she, just walking in, had command presence, not even in uniform. And I learned from her that day that command presence was knowledge, the ability to expound that knowledge, be able to talk about what you know, and the confidence it gave you, not confidence of arrogance or anything like that, just the confidence that she knew what she was doing. And I was so lucky to get to work for her. Throughout my career, I would turn to her corporal sergeant, I think she retired by the time I got promoted to sergeant, I still reached out to her, lieutenant, I still reached out to her. You know, even though she's been gone, her legacy still lives on her facility, and I thank her for showing up here. It means so much. Captain Wilkinson. I have a funny story right now. I know there's a bunch of them to relieve this, but Ed's had my back the whole time. He was there, he was on my first oral board, he was on my last oral board for lieutenant. Sounding board for me, I could go to him all the time. I always had his support. He always told me what he thought. Sometimes it may not have been what I wanted to hear, but always just a great resource for me, and I appreciate him tremendously, all the things he's done, more importantly, his friendship that we've had, just value that. The command staff that I work with now, Lieutenant Griffin, Lieutenant Camilli, Captain Christian, I love the team we have. It's hard leaving you guys, but I know what you guys will do. You keep it going, what we've been doing. The undersheriff, the sheriff, thank you for recognizing the importance of corrections. You don't know how much that means to us, that you guys value what all the correctional officers do over there, correctional deputies do, day in and day out. I know there's a lot of other people, like you said, there's a lot going on, so I'll put rambling on right now. Oh. My family. My family. My wife, my wife, Yacenia, you know, when I met her, things were kind of with my career, and I met her, and things turned around for me tremendously, and I'm so indebted to her. My son, Raylan, is here, my daughter Haley's here, thank you. My mom. My mom back there, my brother Jerry, thank you, guys. All right, I'm forgetting what else to say.
Thank you. Well, thank you for all you do for our community and have done for so many years, very much appreciated. So next we have a proclamation for National Animal Day. Did you want to? Supervisor Bushnell.
Thank you, but I'd like to say something about Jason if I could.
Please.
So Jason, I had an opportunity to meet you during, and work with you a little bit more during the hay drops, and I'm sorry that I, well, I'm glad you're retiring, but I think, you know, the Sheriff's Department's going to fill a void for sure, and, you know, we had four or five days there and had a lot of opportunity to have lots of conversation, and you don't get that opportunity to just have conversation and get to know somebody, and I really appreciated that. And so congratulations on your retirement, and thanks for everything you've done for Humboldt County. I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Was there anybody that would like to come up and also speak in honor of Mr. Benji, Lieutenant?
Good morning. I don't have a prepared speech, but I've been thinking about this since he proclaimed his retirement, and I think it's understated, the community service aspect of what he does. I think that everybody in law enforcement and public safety tries to be well-rounded as far as not just showing up and doing the job, but being that in the community. And it's one thing to coach your own kids, which I do, and people call it community service, and I mean, I think that's debatable, but like Supervisor Bone touched on, Benj has coached hundreds, if not thousands, of other people's kids when his kids weren't even playing, and not because he was getting paid, or because there was some incentive, or because he was going to get recognized at a resolution at the Board of Supervisor meeting, but because he cared and he loved sports and he loved what he was doing, shaping our future, and I think that that can't be overstated. As far as Benj and my interactions, obviously, in the last four years, I've gotten to know him a lot more with my position and truly grew to respect him. He's a straight shooter. He will tell you if your hair is on fire. He's not a yes man, and I respect that a ton. Sometimes it's uncomfortable when somebody tells you the hard truth, but one of the biggest lessons he taught me in the last couple of years, which I think is one of the most valuable life lessons that I have and represents his character, is to be present in the moment, especially if you're people. Don't be distracted. We live in an age of distraction with social media and phones and technology, and be present, because people know if you're not, and you're missing out on those moments you share with people. So I know it's not goodbye, Benj, it's see you later, because we have kids that are going to play against each other in sports for probably the next six or eight years, but I look forward to all that, because I know I'll get to see you and really enjoy our conversations and what you represent. So thank you for all your years of service. We are going to miss you.
Thank you for that, and once again, let's honor Lieutenant Benj. Welcome.
Thank you. Good morning, and thank you, Jason, for those nice words. So I'm Melinda Cherbelini, and I was a jail administrator when Jason kind of rose through the ranks to where he is today and where he's going to go, I guess. We're not sure. But anyway, I just wanted to say that it's been a real pleasure watching Jason grow up in the correctional facility. And it's certainly not an easy job, but he came to work in a very, very troubling time. Here we had a brand-new jail. We had convinced the Board of Supervisors that we were going to run it in this new direct supervision, whatever that was, sort of thing, and we had a lot to prove, and it was a big undertaking. And everyone who got hired during that time and around when Jason did had a challenge ahead of them. And it was really evident from the start that Jason, you know, took that challenge seriously, and he did a great job. He was put in the position of Training Officer, but before that, he was a Transportation Officer, which is a pretty cush job. I mean, these guys behind me are probably going, what? Yeah, yeah, it was a cush job, to drive around town, taking people to appointments, but a serious job, extraditions and things like that. But I encouraged Jason to move around, to apply and seek out those specialty positions. And the one that stands out for me, that I think that brought him and prepared him to be the leader that he is, was Classification Officer. And that's a team of people that have a huge responsibility, that they decide where people are housed, they take care of disciplinary action, and they develop intelligence within the facility. And Jason was one of the first to take on the gang intelligence portion of that position. And it was a tough time to try to be recognized as correctional officers among the law enforcement community. And Jason was part of that team that led people to recognize that the best place to gather that type of information was in the correctional facility. The casual conversations that they had with the inmates, the listening to phone calls and mail and that type of thing, they were invaluable to that resource team. So through that, I think, prepared him to become the leader, that he is respected by the troops and served us all very well. So I want to offer my congratulations, and I guess they're going to be sticking around. It sounds like the undersheriff's got plans for you, so. Congratulations, Jason.
Thank you.
And Supervisor, please, come forward.
I'll keep it brief. I just wanted to talk about, you know, legacy. That's what today means to me, you know? I talk about, we all talk about in our career, what's our legacy going to be? And we're all going to be replaced one day. Someone's going to come in behind us. But our legacy is what we leave behind, and what Jason has left behind is a facility that's far better than when he got here, right? He improved it, and the legacy that he left is also standing in this room. You don't get people show out like this unless you've really left a mark on everybody you've touched, and everyone in this room knows what kind of mark Jason's left on them. Thank you.
Thank you. And I think Supervisor Bone is going to help wrap it up for us here.
Unless Ed's going to say something. Sounds like you were there from start. May add a few words. Jason, like I said, I've known your dad a long time, and he'd be so proud at this moment, because he was such a good man. But I'm going to take this moment of your retirement to remind people, it's been a good job, hasn't it? And we have openings, so if you want to apply to be a correctional deputy. And I'm dead serio, I am dead serious. I mean, I look at, I look at some of these people in the back of the room when they first started out and moving up through the ranks, and it's a good job, and you are serving the community, and it lets you go out and serve the community on the side. So I'm going to throw that cheap plug in there, that we have openings, just go online. But anyway, Jason, I look forward to watching you coach in the future. Great seeing Mom and the family and stuff, but anyway, congratulations, and again, you don't get this kind of crowd. You even got Marco up early in the morning. You don't get this, you don't get this kind of crowd unless you've made an impact on some people, a positive impact. So, thanks, buddy.
All right, thank you.
All right. Okay, that was wonderful. So Supervisor Bushnell.
Thank you. Is there anybody here for pet partners? No? Okay, well, I'll go ahead and read this anyways. Whereas there are thousands of pet partner therapy animal teams serving in communities across the United States, and whereas Pet Partners has designated April 30th as National Therapy Animal Day, and whereas Pet Partners Therapy Animal Teams in the town of Fortuna play an essential role in improving human health and well-being through the human-animal bond, and whereas Pet Partners Therapy Animal Teams make millions of visits per year in settings such as hospitals, nursing homes, schools, and hospice. And whereas Pet Partner Partners Therapy Animal Teams interact with a variety of people in our communities, including veterans, seniors, patients, students, facing literacy challenges and those approaching end-of-life, and whereas those exceptional therapy animals who partner with their human companions bring comfort and healing to those in need. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Humboldt County Board of Supervisors hereby proclaim April 30th, 2023, as National Therapy Animal Day in Humboldt County, and encourage our citizens to celebrate our animal, our therapy animal, and their human handlers.
Great, thank you very much. And next we have a proclamation for Humboldt County Aviation Day. Supervisor Bone.
And we have a huge private, besides our airport, but a lot of private pilots in Humboldt County, and I see Cody here, our Director of Aviation. And Cody, when you speak, would you remind everybody when the airport's going to be closed in August, since we probably should all, well, a lot of people plan ahead, and we should be planning for that, so. I checked, Sacramento Airport will be open during that time. So proclamation of the Board of Supervisors County of Humboldt. Whereas the influence of the aviation industry in California is enormous, and activities taking place at California airports create significant effects across the rest of the economy. Whereas airports have a $62.6 billion annual impact in the state of California, with a multimillion-dollar annual impact to our economy here in Humboldt. Whereas in addition to economic benefit, Humboldt County airports provide services to the community, including air carrier, air cargo, U.S. Coast Guard, air medevac, aerial fire suppression, business transportation, government transportation, search and rescue activities, hay drops, and a home for Cal Fire. I saw Kurt back there somewhere. Whereas Cal Poly Humboldt Aviation Club is working to educate and inspire community members, especially youth, to understand the economic impact and vital role that aviation plays, and encourage local youth to pursue their dreams of becoming pilots, engineers, and aviation professionals. And whereas the Cal Poly Humboldt Aviation Club has demonstrated incredible dedication and hard work by bringing together various resources and individuals to successfully organize Humboldt County's first annual Aviation Day to be held at Murrayfield Airport on April 29th, 2023, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., come out after the rodeo parade. Now therefore be resolved that the Humboldt County Board of Supervisors hereby proclaims April 29th, 2023, to be Humboldt County Aviation Day, and take this opportunity to acknowledge commitment and passion that the Cal Poly Humboldt Aviation Club has shown to highlight the significant role that Humboldt County airports have in providing critical services and economic benefits for our community and our citizens.
Thank you, Supervisor Bone. Cody Ruggit's Director of Aviation for the County of Humboldt. Appreciate that introduction, and as you often do, putting me on the spot, as far as the ACV closure, August 14th through 25th, we will be closed to reconstruct the runway up at ACV, but today we're highlighting a positive note in aviation in general throughout the County of Humboldt and the state of California. All five of you, I'd like to turn the tables and put you back on the spot. Hope to see all five of you and CIO Hayes at Aviation Day this Saturday from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Hope to see many members of the community as well. This will be a free event. We'll be opening the entrance gate, so just proceed into Murrayfield, right by Jacob's Avenue there, as you head north out of Eureka or down south from McKinleyville and Arcata. We're excited to do this with our partners at Cal Poly, but also the U.S. Coast Guard will be participating. They'll have one of their helicopter assets there. We'll have some historical aircraft. Cal Air Lifelight will also be there. But rather than stand up here and be at the mic, you, all five of you, hear from me way too often, I'd like to introduce Ian Simmons, who's the Vice President of the Cal Poly Aviation Club, and also member Casey Valutato, and Dave Marshall, the Faculty Advisor. All three of these individuals have been instrumental in setting this day up and helping us open up aviation to Humboldt County.
Welcome.
Hello. Thank you so much for having us. We are so honored to be here to receive this proclamation from the Board of Supervisors County of Humboldt. I think that for all of us, aviation has played a really large role in our lives and our aspirations in the future, and we're very happy to see these aspirations being reflected in the county. And to put on Airport Day has been just such a joy for us, and we're really excited to facilitate this event and to see what the future of aviation holds for us in Humboldt County.
Yeah, I think Ian touched base really well, that we're really grateful for receiving this, really thankful, and it's an amazing thing to be able to have this opportunity be brought back into the county for not just our generation, but future generations as well. So thank you so much. Everyone, I really appreciate you, and come on out to Airport Day.
Again, thank you for supporting Airport Day and for supporting the students. I think this is really special, and it will probably be something we do into the future, so look forward to another Airport Day next year, but on the 29th, we hope to see you there. And if you know anybody with children, this should be a great event for kids. It's free, and we're going to have a lot of things that are interesting to do, so thanks again.
Well, thank you for your efforts. Very much appreciated. Supervisor Bone?
I'd like to thank Cal Poly Humboldt. Hello, I'd like to thank Cal Poly Humboldt and hope you take it back. I think for you guys to take on the aviation like you are and with the aviation, with the youngsters, it is a big part, and I know drones and everything are a big part of this. Drones are a part of what you're doing, too, and I know you didn't go into that, but what you're doing, that is our future of getting things around, and it's quick, it's easy. And as we well know, being up here in Humboldt, aviation has saved us since the 30s, every time we've had a major disaster. They have saved us. We call on them to go out and find people. We call aviation in so many different forms, so I'm really excited to see Cal Poly, who's been involved with it, but with the new trainer that's going to go in, I think in the library, and the furthering of this, I think it's what Cal Poly's doing, adding nine new majors this year and everything else, so this is a major part of them, so thanks, and take it back to Mr. Jackson, Dr. Jackson, and everybody else. It's important.
Thank you. And next we have two resolutions, but I don't think we need to read them unless you wanted to. So the first one is for a road closure for the Garberville Rodeo Parade on June 17th, another wonderful community event. And then the second one is for a temporary road closure for the Old Timers' Day Parade in Orleans on June 18th. So show up for those in the community, two great events. And next we have a proclamation on Grange Month, and again, by Supervisor Bone. This is Supervisor Bone's day.
I don't, is anybody here from the Grange? Because if they're not, I'm not going to read this one. I am going to say, I think we all, a lot of us have a Grange in our district, or some of us have multiple Granges in our district. I know I spent quite a bit of time in my one out in Matol. I know Mike, I know Supervisor Lovelace, and I think Mike flips pancakes at the Grange in Freshwater every once in a while. Bayside used to be a Grange. I don't know what it is anymore. Bayside used to be a Grange, I don't know what it is anymore. So, but we have Granges, and they go back a long time, so we just want to recognize them, I'm not going to, you guys don't have to listen to 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 11 whereases, but they, we recognize them every year, and I think they're an important part of our society too, so thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Bone, and with that, that's all the proclamations we have on our consent agenda, so are there any questions from the board on the consent agenda? Supervisor Wilson?
I was just going to move consent a bit.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, but we'll go to public comment. Let's the board, please comment.
I do have a comment, please.
Supervisor Bush, no.
Thank you, so I would like to just thank Catherine Culver for her service to the Fortuna Cemetery District, and for the appointment of Anthony Oosted, I think, I'm going to, I'm sorry, messed that last name up. And then also I want to recognize that Jack Rice is going to be replacing John Rice, who unexpectedly passed away on the Williamson Act Board, and I want to thank him very much for being, being willing to take that. Jack is the nephew of John Rice, so I want to say thank you for that.
Thank you Supervisor Bush, no, and yeah, we have lots of vacancies in our committees, and these are, today we're filling some of those, so thank you folks for stepping up and volunteering. So with that, we'll go to public comment, do we have any hands up in Zoom?
Chair Madron, we do, caller 7718.
Okay, 7718, this is your opportunity to speak, please let us know which item on the consent agenda you're speaking on, and you have three minutes, and please stay on topic, thank you.
1718, Ken Swawski from Mexico, can you hear me this time?
Yes, we can, welcome.
Thanks, I appreciate that. I did wish to make a comment on, one of which is the Grange comments you made there, right now the Grange seems to be one of the places where people are able to find any insurance in Humboldt County real property, so I did want to shout out to the Grange as far as what they just there, are doing there regarding that piece of the topic, very important to have very safe a voice and search, and we're all aware. I did wish to, to make a comment on aviation, and this is on commercial aviation, one comment, it's not my idea, Tom Madsen, I said it'd be wonderful if Humboldt State was part of private schools, or other schools that would support the aviation business, and have staffs up there, that have given us people locally to work on our airline. Our biggest problem right now, and I spent quite a few years, that's been great thoughts of there, and I did call Cody a couple times, he's got one of his staff numbers, and that's me, is scheduling of commercial flights, and it's been only two flights coming in and out of, out of ACV that facilitates our need with the early flight out, which is probably definitely fine in any major airport, so we can make our connection, and then what we refer to as a pickup flight coming back in. Hopefully our aviation proposal will get us back on track, we lost both of those flights, unless it changes since I left for Mexico, and that's very, very inconvenient to not be able to get in and out, and in other words, this trip I will have to stay in LAX, I ride in there at 11:40, and I'm not able to leave until midday the next day. And that's partly not just because of our schedule, because international schedule changing the whole, what's even pretty changing rather rapidly than the chance from the outside. So I do probably support those two things, and I also wanted to make comment on the pets, the people who reach out and take care of pets to get to the future of leaving. That is what, like I've always said, my greatest gift to us, and I strongly want to applaud and thank those people who do that highly needed thing, to get people in contact with the animals out there, to leave their scratch, and to make the world much more wonderful, that's not too much to be done, and they're proud of it.
Thank you commenter, and I do not see any other hands up in Zoom, so we'll go to those in the audience here today. If anybody here would like to speak on the consent agenda, please step forward and let us know which item you're speaking on. Seeing no movement towards the podium, we'll go ahead and close public comment, and bring it back to the board, and we do have a motion and a second, I believe our voting tabs are up.
Thank you, motion passes 5-0.
Great, thank you very much. And with that, we're going to go to public comment on non-agenda items, so if anybody on Zoom has a public comment on non-agenda items, please raise your hand, and I see we have 7718, this is your opportunity for public comment on non-agenda items, you have three minutes. Star six, there you go.
Ken Swawski, we have a small little town called Blue Lake, and I'm sure some of you are familiar with that. We seem to be having some dysfunction in our city of Blue Lake. We have things, such things, you know, a topic, especially meaning to explain to people they're in major projects out there, which I won't even mention by name, probably 50 people showed up at that meeting, it was a regular city council meeting, and people spoke, and I think if I recall right, and I can't verify this, that there were probably 30 or 40 people that spoke, three or four people spoke in favor of this particular project, the remainder who spoke, spoke against it. But the real big problem we have here in most places, and it's not traveling in the counties I'm speaking, but there is no record of that meeting, no record as far as comments, no record as far as attendance, because we didn't get anything to find, maybe there, maybe our city manager will get that for us. The other problem we have is we have a housing element that was supposed to be updated, and we got, instead of having the 30-day comment period, we were given a seven-day, and everybody else has, John said 30 days appropriate, and, and what happened was the notification of that time stamp was done improperly, it was just put on a website and not put out in the normal places, and even that website, according to what I've been able to find out, came out already into the seven-day period. It is very disgusting for us, the city to participate in projects, offices, but are secluded from doing so, or, it's unfortunate, but if we can't get a public record, if it's a mixed data record that's correct, and reflects the public need, we can't be having meetings like the other day when the city manager decided, well, he didn't like the content that went on between the public and the council, and therefore she didn't put the meeting out there, it's a public record, mixed data record, that has to happen, so if any of you have any favorite way with looking at these units, please see if we can get people to follow the rules from regular, enable people to participate in the process, this is my opportunity to speak today on a non-agenda item.
Thank you commenter, and seeing no other hands up in Zoom, we'll come back here to the audience here today. If anybody would like to speak on agenda, on items not on our agenda, this is your opportunity to come forward and speak. And again, seeing no movement towards the podium, we're going to move on to the next item on our agenda, and that is a time set item, and it is our 930 Fiscal Year 2324, Measure Z Citizens Advisory Committee Recommendations and Supplemental Budget Requests. And I believe we're going to have CAO Hayes start this out, and then probably have assistants here.
Thank you Chair Madron, every year around this time, we present to your board the recommendations that have been established by the Citizens Advisory Committee. They work very hard through the month of March, reviewing a tremendous amount of applications. There's many committee members in the audience today, and I'd like to thank them for their efforts on that. This year is a difficult year though, we have not a lot of money to go around, and a lot of tremendous needs across our community, so the report is presented to you in a little bit of a different format, where we are looking to seek some guidance from your board on maybe some modifications that we can make to future allocations. With that, Deputy CAO Sean Quincy is here to present those ideas to your board in greater detail.
A question from Supervisor Bone.
You know, as I read this, and, and thank you for getting it to us Friday, there's an ad hoc committee, and there's ad hoc committee recommendations in here, but the ad hoc committee has never presented to the Measure Z Committee, is that right?
That, that is correct, the ad hoc committee met five times over the month of March, but given budget constraints and the need to seek guidance from your board, their ideas are presented in here, but it's not necessarily reflective of the whole committee. That said, the committee is an advisory committee, they are tasked with working with our office to address citizens' concerns, which is what the ad hoc has done in collaboration with Sean. In addition to the recommendations, or the, the ideas that have come from the ad hoc committee, there's additional considerations for your board, so while the whole committee may not have been able to weigh in on those thoughts, I think there's still good ideas for your board to consider, and, and there are other alternatives that your board consider, can consider. In order to move the budget forward, we need direction from your board though.
Understood, but it kind of takes the, I know they met five times, and I thank the ad hoc committee for that, but I'm not sure, because I came to a few meetings, how many times the Measure Z Committee met, and to come in here with recommendations from an ad hoc, and we're supposed to weigh the two equally, and I just figure this is the eighth year we've done Measure Z, is that right? I've always had a Measure Z Committee recommendation to use as a guideline, and now I have an ad hoc and Measure Z Committee, and things from the CAO's office, and I just, I, I don't know if that downplays the Measure Z Committee and all the time and effort they made, I think the ad hoc committee was good to maybe, you know, give them crib notes to take back with the budget constraints we have, but I just, I'm wondering if I, I'm not as comfortable operating on this without the Measure Z Committee as a whole talking to the ad hoc, and I know we've got time constraints and everything else, but I also know about emergency meetings and how fast we can get things going, so I'm just, my personal is I'm kind of blindsided by the, not having the measures, having Measure Z, ad hoc, and the CAO, and trying to weigh everything together, I would, I would have loved to have the Measure Z package as a whole with your recommendations to the Measure Z Committee, that's just my 20%.
Sure, point of clarification, the Citizens Advisory Committee recommendations have been approved by the committee and are included in today's board report, that is the charge that the committee has to, to make recommendations on the allocations, they're included in your attachments as 1.2 detailing their priority list. Beyond that, there are long-term considerations for your board on the overall sustainability of Measure Z and the future of allocation. Should your board not be comfortable with anything contained in this report, then give us direction, and we'll move forward with the committee.
Great, yeah, that's why we're here today, right, to have a good, informed discussion about all these things, and it's never easy when there isn't enough money to go around, so we're certainly in that situation, and again, as was stated, we very much appreciate the work of the Measure Z Committee, the ad hoc, and everybody that's been involved, including all the applicants who have spent a lot of time trying to put forth their proposals to take care of public safety issues in our community. So with that, Deputy Director Quincy.
Thank you Chair Madron, members of the board. So a little bit of a clarification before I get started this, and as CAO Hayes mentioned, this is a little bit of an unusual report. Writing this report and presenting this to your board admittedly was a little bit awkward because of the dynamic that Supervisor Bone just expressed. The ad hoc committee's charge was to come before the full Measure Z Committee and present recommendations. In this report, we tried, or I tried not to form the ad hoc's thoughts as recommendations, but just as information for your board to consider. So with that, I'll just quickly go through Fiscal Year 2223, and onto some of those thoughts if, if your board so wishes to discuss it. All right, so Fiscal Year 2223, short and sweet, we are looking, projecting a year-end fund balance of about $279,000. There's an asterisk there with a note that says we don't recommend this funding be available for allocation in 2324. That's because Fiscal Year 2223 is still very fluid, transactions are still posting to prior years, we still don't know what revenue is going to do also in the current year. Back in February, we came to your board and informed you of some drastic revenue reductions that we were seeing in the current year, and it's too early to say, given all that's at stake with Measure Z, it's too early to say that there's going to be funding available. Looking ahead to 2324, we're projecting a little over $12 million in ongoing county expenditures. This 2324 is different from prior years in that we're projecting no one-time funding to be available to go towards a lot of those discretionary allocations that the committee recommends to your board. Right now, we're projecting a little over $600,000 to be available for discretionary Background on 2223, in this time last year, when staff came to your board last April, we projected $14.4 million in revenue for 2223, with about $3.2 million left over in fun, funding available from the prior year. In that meeting, your board moved forward with recommendations, with the committee's recommendations, and directed staff to look into whether or not we could fund the radio improvement project and the roads project with ARPA funding. Staff researched that, came back to your board in September, we reported to your board that we projected a little bit more carry forward, or significantly more carry forward unused funding from the prior year to be allocated in 2223, and at that time, we were recommended that the radio project and the roads project be funded with Measure Z funding rather than ARPA. Additionally, at that meeting, your board, because of the additional carry forward funding, the revenue above projections in 2122, your board was able to go further down the committee's list of prioritized projects that ended up tacking on about $1.18 million in ongoing county expenditures, and about $552,000 in other expenditures. This just shows the applications, the projects that were originally proposed in April, and then in September, your board approved those projects. On the right is a list of projects that were approved in September. I'll note at the very top there on the right-hand side, there is, we had to reduce the funding from roads a bit in order to make the budget fit, so roads had requested $880,000 for roads funding, and that got reduced down to $720,000. So again, this is, back to 2223 and 2324, this is, sorry, this is a duplicate slide, but again, $622,000 available for allocation in 2324. So in this year's Measure Z process, at the first meeting in March, when the committee began looking at all the applications, I informed the committee that we were looking at about $700,000 in available funding for the following year. At that meeting, at that meeting, there was a Measure Z ad hoc committee that was appointed. Their charge was to review Measure Z, provide recommendations on the future of Measure Z, with the caveat that they did not want recommendations to come back to the committee until after this year's Measure Z Committee had finished its work, and provided recommendations to the board. That said, the Measure Z ad hoc did meet over March and April with staff and several different department heads to look at, to discuss concerns and with departments, and collaborate on potential solutions. Overall goals of that ad hoc committee were to ensure that Measure Z is sustainable, ensure that it provides stable funding for county agencies, stable funding for outside agencies, and they wanted to make sure that unspent one-time funding went to one-time projects. And so this is the section of the report that is open for your board to consider, especially considering the funding restraints that we are up against in 2324. I will note that in the current year, when we went down the list and allocated more, or funded more projects, the, your board allocated 16 additional county staff positions. Of those positions, only one of them is currently filled at the time. only one of them is currently filled at the time. So a topic for your board to consider as we look ahead to '23, '24 is what to do with those positions that were allocated in '22, '23. In total, the amount of funding those positions account for is about $1.6 million. There are four public works positions for about $370,000, one position in the county administrative office for $111,000, four positions in the district attorney's office, $425,000, and seven positions in health and human services for a little over $700,000. Topic number two in the staff report is other mechanisms that your board may wish to consider to reduce expenditures. Some typical processes that we use at the county that your board is well familiar with is using vacancy rates. Right now, your board directed general fund departments to operate under a 10% vacancy rate and the 20, as they go to develop '23, '24 budget. That's one mechanism to reduce expenditures. Your board could also, or county staff could look to other funding mechanisms for existing positions or services. Third topic to consider is changes to the process to providing funding recommendations. And the reason this is up there is because the current process that is in place has us in the position that we are in now. As long as there's additional funding that is available, typically your board follows the committee's recommendation, their prioritized list, and goes down the list. And that leads us to the situation where we use one-time funding to fund ongoing obligations. And so that's just not a sustainable practice. And finally, topic number four is the use of one-time funding in Measure Z. Your board could consider directing the committee or staff to develop some sort of a policy around the use of one-time funding. Best practice in budgeting is to tie one-time funding to And this slide, sorry if it's not large enough, but this slide attempts to detail the average allocation that agencies have received over the last six years. Not all agencies are reflected here because not all agencies receive funding every year, but each agency here has received funding at least three years out of the last six years. Most of them have received funding every year. And I will note that the percentages there, this chart is also in the, in the staff report. The percentages there detail the amount of funding, the percentage of funding that is available, the percentage of funding that is allocated to those agencies as, as a piece of the overall amount of funding available. So that includes revenue and any unspent funding from the prior year. And so with that, I know that there are members of the Measure Z Committee here, there are members of the Measure Z ad hoc here, and I'm also here to answer any questions if you like.
Great. Thank you very much for that presentation. So first, we'll go back to the board here for any clarifying questions. After that, then we're going to go ahead and get into public comment, and then we'll bring it back to the board for discussion and decision. Any clarifying questions from the board at this point? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and go to the public at this point, if that seems reasonable to everybody. Okay. So I see we do have one hand up in the Zoom, and that is 7718. This is your chance to speak on Measure Z. Welcome.
The time I'm going to do what I call go out of the box. The funding you have here is getting more and more uncertain. I would not tie any job, anything to this for the long-term funding. It should all be year-to-year, short-term funding. You should give other sources of money for funding for long-term funding. What's happened, and I've watched, I've watched quite a few of the Measure Z committees, and of course, there was nothing for them to do to do that, to go through a whole bunch of requests and say no. I wanted to make a comment on, on the roads. My understanding is that the county proposes either a quarter or half percent sales tax for roads. You know, the state has a policy, and it's called sales tax. And if you put a quarter percent in, they are considered sales tax. They say, "You're doing the best you can, and that's why they will give you what they're, what benefits." If you're to put a voter initiative on before the voters, it'd be a taxpayer agreement. I'm not speaking for the taxpayers. To have you folks not allocate exactly the same amount of money to roads out of Measure Z as you're saying you want the tax paid in addition. In other words, if you want to go with a quarter cent or a quarter, the half of your tax could be going to roads. Otherwise, you're, you're saying, "We have plenty of money. We don't need your tax, and they'll pass our tax." So I strongly recommend that you consider putting as much money into roads. And of course, I doubt whether you can put that quarter cent in there that you're going to be asking, or passing your asking, maybe the whole thing into roads. But it won't go well. I guarantee you people will say you're not willing to put your share of money into taking care of roads first rather than going back to the taxpayer for more money. I'm not optimistic as far as the tax goes. I'm not optimistic as far as what the, what the terms are going. And I hate to have to be in, being close or encroached to, and I told you so. But for, for what, 10 years or something, I've been recommending that you put away about 10 or 20% of this for what's about to happen to it economically. I'm just gonna recommend that you don't spend on your money, and you definitely don't use it as a source of funds for long-term. Some people suggest as much as 30% lower sales tax, depending on how big the recession is that we have coming. And I just hate to see that the county forcing themselves, "Hey, we have these jobs. Well, go ahead and fund them some other way. Wean yourself from that particular source of funds." And the people aren't happy. The municipalities are not happy out there because when I think with Measure O, you want us to, it wouldn't be a sunset on this. They were told minor 10 years or 10 years where they would get their share of this money. That seems to be drying up. It's not totally gone. And you're going to find the municipalities are not going to want to play with the county. They feel like they've been tricked into this, and they definitely regret how we've done it, had it not gone before the vote.
Thank you, commenter. And so we do have other hands up in Zoom. And of course, if you're in Zoom calling in, star nine is the way that you raise your hand. And so we have 1743, star six to unmute. There you go.
Hi, this is Brooke Tensminger from Star Ambulance, and I'm calling in because I'm out 36 on duty today and couldn't be there. And I just wanted to thank the, the board and the committee for the support Star has received in the past five years to keep the ambulance operational, operational out here in Eastern Humboldt, Highway 36. And to just reemphasize that the Star, Star has a small budget, but the part from Humboldt is essential to keeping us actually operational and having ambulance service out here. And then I appreciate that Measure Z has been used, being that rural ambulance service was one of the bullet points of the measure and was voted on actually, keeping that alive. So I know you guys are in a tight spot, but I'm hoping that the supervisors can find a way to, to maintain our ambulance service for the county, for, for all of the county. Thank you.
Thank you, commenter. And next, we have 7108, star six to unmute. Star six to unmute. There you go. Welcome.
Hi. Thank you. A couple comments. Looking at one of these documents, the Southern Trinity Area Rescue Star, they get, they're asking for 182,926 to fund four full-time EMPs, which I totally support. Further on down the line is the City of Fortuna Police Department, they're asking for 195,438 in the revised budget, and that's the salary for one SRO. So I'm just thinking, boy, we can get four EMPs for that. And why is this one position costing 195,000 plus, I have those points, plus Measure Z, when it was put out. People thought that if it's $180,000, we can go through a road. What's happened is very little of that money goes through roads, which doesn't work. And I think that's a real problem. So I just wanted to put those two comments in. Thank you.
Thank you, commenter. And that's all we have for hands up in the Zoom. And so we're going to go here to the audience. And I just wanted to say that after we have public comment, I do want to invite the Measure Z Committee Chair or Vice Chair that might be here to also provide any comments they might want to share with us, separate from the public comment. But I want to be able to give them enough time, perhaps even more than three minutes, so to honor the hard work you have all done. So any public comment here in the room today on this Measure Z before us, please step forward. And if you do want to comment, come on over to the, the side here and line up, and that way we can move along swiftly. That would be great to have people helping with that. Welcome.
Good morning, Supervisors. It's wonderful to see everybody that I've been able to talk to throughout the years. Thank you very much for having me here. And I do want to do a little bit of housekeeping. At the last meeting, we were asked if we could reduce our asks, and we did. But I noticed in that last paper that was sent yesterday, it still said 20, and we were asking for 10. The same thing we did in 2019, 2020, which was the last time we received any kind of funding. Homelessness and the, the stuff that comes behind it. Most of these agencies actually deal with it. We've just now, this year, beginning of this year, went over 2 million pounds of trash that we've taken out from our environmentally sensitive areas. This is a position that we're going to have to find out how to fund, whether we do it through public health and safety, or we do it through somebody else's budget. This is a necessary piece, not just the engagement of the homeless, but what happens when the homeless are moved from place to place. This is in our marshes and in our wetlands, which are our filtering system for our bay. We have to address this on a very timely basis. All I ask is give us the health and safety, the safety equipment, the gloves, the bags, the boots for the homeless individuals that we hire to actually address this issue. I do not want to take away from our law enforcement. They're critical. Our fire departments, our ambulances and everything else. But also, the degradation of the homeless population is extremely important to all of us, to our children and the future and everything. So all I can ask is look at that, see if there's anything left at the end. We'll take just about anything to buy trash bags and gloves to get more of our trash out of our community. Thank you.
Thank you. And for those that don't know, that's John Shelter with, with New Horizons, New Directions, excuse me. Thank you, John, and welcome.
Thank you. I'm Tammy Trent, Mayor of City of Fortuna. Good morning, and I know you have a very tough job ahead of you with very little money to fund and a lot of deserving applications. I'm going to start out with a report I have from the DHHS. I'm here talking about the Drug Task Force. Drug overdose and substance use disorder deaths resulting from short or long-term substance abuse has been and remaining a significant public health concern for Humboldt County. The recent rise in fentanyl abuse and deaths from, from fentanyl poisoning represent a major new challenge and address, in Humb, to address in Humboldt County. Fentanyl-related drug poisoning deaths increased 3, increased 363% in 21 from 22, from 21 to 22, according to accounting for 64% of all drug poisoning deaths. When compared to California and US cities, the mortality rate by age range from drug poisoning in Humboldt County is significantly higher than any other counties. So Fortuna is one of the agencies that has been able to, we've had a Drug Task Force officer for eight years now. It's been funded through the county. Other agencies unfortunately don't have full staffing and are able to. I think this position is very, very important. It saves lives. It works in, in the whole county, not just Fortuna. So I'm asking for funding for this position again to continue. The Drug Task Force has been very successful in the whole county, and it does save lives getting these drugs off the street. So I am asking you to please continue to fund this so we can continue the good work that it is doing. And one other ask I have is our school resource officer is working on with our, our pop team, a drug education starting in 7th and 8th grade in all the grammar schools in Southern Humboldt, Ferndale, and the high schools. And if it's possible for $5,000 to $10,000 to help with this, that would be very appreciated, and it would be able to go through all those county schools. So those were my two asks, and thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good morning, Honorable Supervisors. It's a pleasure to be back in front of you. Ironically, I think the last time I was here, it was to highlight the national award and achievement of our SRO program, which, if you remember, was nationally recognized just a year ago among six states as a single selection. So I don't want to disagree. I think what was stated earlier by the Deputy CAO that, you know, the members of the Measure Z Committee do, you know, an excellent job trying to come to their recommendations in what is, you know, what is a very difficult process. But I think we would be remiss to dismiss that, you know, the members do come from a diverse background and with, you know, certain agendas that are more representative of the areas that they reside or work in. And so, you know, with that, I think that's explicitly why this board has oversight and that this board, my recommendation going forward is that this board does utilize that oversight to look at and consider what actually is best for the committee. And in the three years that I've been here, coming from Shasta County, I think that this board has done an excellent job of doing that. So, you know, just to close, I want to highlight our two positions, as the mayor brought up earlier. Our two commonplace applications are for our SRO program and for our DTF position. And I just want to impress upon the board, those are regional positions. When we cut the SRO program down there, it's not just going to be for the schools in the city limits, but we're saying no to Hydesville, the unincorporated area, you know, excuse me, Rio Del, Ferndale, all those places. There's 15 campuses that the Fortuna Police Department SRO program serve, and that's a lot of kids. So we're going to be removing that. And then as far as the DTF, again, as the mayor, you know, talked about earlier, just a year ago, the year preceding this current year, I served as the county's executive chair for the Drug Task Force. And I can tell you during that year, besides the sheriff's department, the district attorney's office, and Fortuna, we had a very significant challenge keeping Drug Task Force staff. Despite the great work that we were doing, because of the national crisis for staffing for law enforcement across the state, and we weren't immune here in Humboldt County, a lot of these agencies had to pull back their DTF agents, I see 30 seconds, and also their own specialty in-house positions, such as their detectives, just to make patrol staffing work. So I'm here today to advocate to the board, you know, at least pick up the Drug Task Force and, you know, give us the ability to continue that good work of ridding the dangerous drugs in our community. Thank you.
Welcome.
Hi, Lieutenant Matt Eberhart, Fortuna Police Department. First of all, I'm not going to be redundant. I mean, you understand what, what we're facing here in Fortuna. We have managed to maintain our staff. Very appreciative and grateful. Very appreciative and grateful for what we've been able to accomplish with the funding and your support. Do not envy the decision you have today. Don't want to distract, to take away from anybody's project in here, but we do ask that you consider us.
Thank you. And next? Welcome.
Tom Mattson, Director of Public Works for Humboldt County. Good morning, Chairman Madron, members of the board. I'm not going to speak to this year's allocation because it is what it is. There's just no money for anything extra. I want to speak to the mention of the positions that were funded last year and discussing those. It's not for lack of recruiting that we have not been able to hire, uh, equipment operators or maintenance workers, three, to staff the, the mowing crew. We have ordered the mowers already. They are being constructed. We've already spent that money. This is going to leverage significant additional funding if we can get these positions filled. We've already met with our outside consultant, MRG. We met with the CAO and HR yesterday to talk about the, uh, the, the salary that we're paying. We believe we have a solution that's going to make us very competitive in the market and within our budget. So I would just caution you to be, to not cut the positions that were already allocated last year. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you, Chairman Madron and Supervisors. Mike Johnson, Mayor Pro Tem, City of Fortuna. I know there's been a lot said. I'm trying to come at it from a slightly different angle. As you know, we've got a new rise of fentanyl and xylazine invading our communities, and along with the existing scourge of methamphetamine and heroin and illicit opioids, they're growing. It's not going away. We have an opportunity to have a, uh, boots-on-the-ground, experienced, ready-to-go member of the Drug Task Force so that we don't have to send the Drug Task Force out with either short-staffed or take away what is going to be a critical member of the existing staff of SO, and we won't have to remove that person from, uh, continuing their job in Humboldt County. So I just ask that you consider the savings and the criticalness of the Drug Task Force Officer. You've heard about the School Resource Officer, and the incidents that have happened in the last few years shows the value of that as well as the national recognition. So I just ask for your thoughtful consideration of this position and the request. Thank you.
Thank you. Next? Welcome.
Good morning, Chair. Good morning, Board. Paul Bignacki, I'm Deputy Director of Behavioral Health. Uh, one of my teams is the MIST team, and I'd like to, um, speak to that, um, real quick. Just during March alone, we've had thirty-two call-outs, collaborations with, uh, the Sheriff's Office, and, um, and that also includes all of the collateral contacts and additional contacts from those initial thirty-two, uh, contacts that we've had. Those call-outs have been out to the Garberville area in Southern Humboldt, as well as around here out of Eureka and McKinleyville. The team is also, um, working to expand the services out to Willow Creek and also with our tribal partners, the Aroc PD. We have been utilizing, uh, grant funding for this year for those, uh, for those positions, but we will need to have Measure Z funds to continue this essential program, uh, moving forward in future years. So, uh, thank you for consideration.
Thank you. Welcome.
Welcome. Thank you. De'Yenia, Humboldt County Fire Chiefs Association. Right here, we have fourteen departments in front of you to, to show Humboldt County Fire. We believe that we're a vital part of public safety in, in Humboldt County. And over the years, we feel that we have made our ass, what was it, thirteen to fourteen percent in the last five years? We are extremely concerned about the way Measure Z is going and the ongoing county cost. And so we're looking forward to see what resolutions you guys have to, to keep funding all these, these great things that need to be done in the county. But we're also out there, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi, I'm Peter Luski. I'm Chief of the Telegraph Ridge Volunteer Fire District. I've been in Humboldt County Fire Service for thirty-five years. I have never received a paycheck. I'm a volunteer, as are dozens of volunteer departments in this county. Because none of us receive paychecks, there's no salaries involved. So every year, we have to come to you for funding. When you provide money to other agencies that have salaries, that money's taken out of the pool. So we come hat in hand every year to try and adequately fund the volunteer fire departments. There is no county fire department like other counties have. We provide the emergency services in all the rural areas. When Measure Z came on the ballot and later Measure O, our department, as many others, campaigned hard to pass these measures, promising our, uh, our residents that they would have emergency services. We cannot provide these without adequate gear and equipment. Over the years, you've provided us much of this. We put up a firehouse that is not complete. We have a newer engine. But gear wears out, engines break down. We continually need funding to be able to provide these services. As I said, none of it goes to salaries. You heard from people speaking about homelessness, about drug problems. Fire responds to all these. We have fires and homeless encampments. We have drug overdoses. We've been trained with Narcan. So a lot of the other problems that occur in this county are, cause fire responses. Without adequate safety gear and safe engines, I lose volunteers. And if volunteers quit, we can't provide the services we need to, to the rural residents of this county. I urge you to adequately fund the fire service. Uh, there are dozens of separate agencies. Do not look at this as one funding for the Fire Chiefs Association. If every different fire department came to you asking for Measure Z funds, you'd see three dozen other fire chiefs here, each asking for money. Instead, we've pooled it into one large group. So when you provide money to the Fire Chiefs Association, you're providing it to dozens of different agencies and districts. Our fire department went to our voters and said, "We don't have enough money. Could we raise the fee?" We got an eighty-one percent vote, uh, to raise our fees. We can't ask our taxpayers for any more in our district. We need help from the county. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next? Welcome.
Yeah, thank you guys for giving me the opportunity, and thank you for the support of Measure Z in the past. I'm telling you right now, Measure Z has saved lives and properties since we've been supported at the Chiefs Association level. My name is Nick Pape. I speak for seventeen of the Southern Humboldt Fire Departments as part of the Humboldt County Chapter of Chiefs Association. Uh, we have over two hundred firefighters just in Southern Humboldt. And right now, if we are not funded because of the allocations aren't there for Measure Z, we're going to be asking our volunteers to do more. Right? If we asked our awesome Sheriff's Department to ride the calls in nineteen nineties trucks and then do it for free, they'd have a hard time doing that. And that's arguably what we're going to be having our volunteers do. There are chiefs out there right now that will not be able to retain, recruit and retain firefighters because they don't have the gear to put them in, and they just won't have to look for them. If we only have fifteen sets of fire turnout gear, we're not going to be looking for that sixteenth and seventeenth firefighter until the funding's available. We have fire departments in our area that are literally funding their department off selling blackberry pies and hamburgers. So I do continue, can, thank you guys for the continued support. Um, this is going to be a, an issue that will pull fire engines off the streets. Part of our request at Southern Humboldt Fire this year, as part of our new regional request within the Fire Chiefs, is for three brand-new Type Six engines that are multi-role engines for departments that have never had brand-new engines before. If we do not get the funding for that, these departments don't have a Plan B or C to get these engines. A lot is banking on the decisions that are made today, and I definitely don't envy you with the decisions that you have to make, uh, but I do continue to thank you guys for the support going forward.
Chairman Madron, Board of Supervisors and Staff. From a, I'm Kurt McCray. I'm the Unit Chief of the Humboldt-Dell Norte Unit for CAL FIRE that covers Humboldt-Dell Norte and Western Trinity Counties. And behind me in the room, as well as throughout the county, are countless volunteers that spend their time away from their families, away from their jobs, to affect a service that we critically need throughout our county. This, uh, this service strengthens our social fabric, and an example I'd like to give you is last Friday, I visited Humb- Honeydew Fire Department, and they have a nineteen-fifties fire engine. I'm telling you what, that takes some courage to go into a, you know, into a battle with a nineteen-fifties fire engine. The support you've provided, from my observation as being a member of the Chiefs Association, has been, um, the money's been spent in a very fiduciary manner by the members for the effect of better responses and service to our community. So I really encourage you to all look into your considerations of this very difficult challenge you have in front of you to affect the strength and capacity of our local fire departments. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. Uh, thanks, Chairman, Board. Luke Brownfield, Public Defender. The request that we have currently is for our social workers. It's the only thing I've seen in my time in Humboldt that really has helped, uh, the clients that we provide services to, to keep them from recidivism. They provide housing, help provide housing to these people, help provide getting them into drug treatment, getting them the services they need. Some of these people would not be able to find that without our social workers. So I just ask that you would consider, um, funding those two positions. They're currently grant positions, and we're just not sure if we're going to get those grants. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, it looks like that's the end of, uh, public comment, and so I'll invite the Measure Z Committee Chair up for, um, comments and what you would like to share with us. And I'm not going to constrain this to three minutes. I'd like you to have the time to share with us your thoughts.
Thank you, Chairman Madron. And, uh, what I want to start off with, so I should introduce myself. My name is Justin Robinson. It's a real pleasure to be with you all here this morning. And the first thing I want to say, Chairman Madron, and to my fellow supervisors, is that Measure Z has been a success in this county. It's been a success, and public safety has been improved with Measure Z funds across the county, and I believe has hit every, every community. And I know how challenging it is for all of us to, um, reflect on the situation in our county right now, and where the economy's going, and all the incredible need. You know, this year, we had some twelve million dollars in asks for what we thought was only about eight hundred thousand dollars in funding. And, and individuals are, individuals in that process and other folks, you know, talk about, "Well, we should do these things. We need to, we need to make Measure Z sustainable, and, um, we need to do these other things to make Measure Z sustainable." And, um, and that's really, really difficult to do on that side of the equation, given all of our challenges. What we need for stable funding is, is stable economies and, and, and growth, economic growth in our county. This last year was very, very challenging, uh, given the amount of funding that was available. And, um, I support the recommendation that was made by the committee, and I also want to say, um, that I would want to advise my fellow committee members going forward on the committee and the Board of Supervisors that I think what's important going forward, given the challenging times that are ahead, is, is that we, we fund projects that leverage other funding sources, that, that leverage creativity and leverage in-kind labor. And John and New Directions were a great example of, of that. And even though they weren't recommended for funding, that is a project that really leverages in-kind labor, and, and it's those types of projects that should be, should be funded. I also want to give voice to the comments that were shared moments ago from Director Mattson in terms of supporting the, the county mower positions. I completely agree with what Director Mattson said, that, that that will, will, uh, will leverage other funding. And in fact, it already has. Congratulations to Supervisor Madron, Supervisor Bone, and Supervisor Bushnell for the US Department of Agricultural Community Wildfire Defense Funding that always come to your districts, and there's great opportunity for three more funding cycles of the USDA's Community Wildfire Defense Grant going forward. So please keep those mower positions funded through the Department of Public Works. I want to give a, if I may, Supervisor Madron, I would like to give a thanks to my fellow committee members, especially to, uh, my Vice Chair, Ginger Campell. And I want to give thanks to county staff, um, and I also want to share my appreciation for being able to serve this county in this capacity, to come from Shelter Cove, uh, as an alternate member, and then to have gained the trust of my committee members, to gain the trust of this board to serve as the chair, has been, it's just been a lot of fun. And so it's tough, but it's been a lot of fun. And, um, I, 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 some of you may know this, but I'm, I'm moving on from my position, uh, down in Shelter Cove, and, um, I'm going to be moving here out of the county. And I just want to also say farewell and, and thank you so much for, for your service for our county, and you're going to figure it out. You're going to lead us where we need to be led. You're going to figure it out. And you're going to continue to leverage these funds that are available and maybe consider some other taxes that are needed to improve our roadways and other things. So Supervisor Madron, Chairman Madron, I'm certainly happy to answer any questions that you have, sir, or any other questions from our supervisors. Thank you so much.
Appreciate that, and, uh, best to you and your move, and thank you for your service here in the community. Appreciate it. If there are questions, we'll bring you back up, uh, and, uh, please, Measure Z Committee Members.
Good morning. My name is Glenn Zeamer. I've had the privilege of being a member of the Z Committee since its inception, and I was one of three members that formed the ad hoc committee that had been referenced earlier today. I think it's fair to say that Z and O, as its successor, have enjoyed the success that they have because the community views those projects and policies as being open, transparent, representative. And I've always been very proud of the process that we used and, and the results that we were able to achieve. As you may recall, two years ago, we came to the board with the concern that it was pretty obvious that we were reaching the point where the county's ongoing payroll expenses were going to consume the totality of the fund. And, uh, although that was viewed not to be an imminent result, uh, it was still something that was inevitable. Unfortunately, there have been two factors that have advanced that process, the first being the significant, uh, compensation package that was offered to the county's law enforcement officers. Certainly, they deserve, that, that, that's not the point of the discussion, but the simple fact is you raised the cost of your law enforcement component somewhere north of thirty percent. The second factor that complicates Measure Z specifically is the fact that during the period of time that you didn't have a functional order controller, the fund balances were never identifiable, and as a result, the CEO and, and the county staff wasn't able to come to you with any hard numbers as far as the carryforwards and the unspent expenditures. Unfortunately, when they were, they were able to do that last year, they brought a package forward to you of about four-point-seven million dollars in carryforward funding, and that represented essentially three years accumulation. The board made the decision, I, I think quite frankly, I'll be honest with you, a, a board decision, to go ahead and expend the totality of that money in one year. And the result of it was that you funded projects all the way to the very bottom of the listing. And the net result of that is the fact that, given the history and policy of the way we've done this process, you created a whole bunch of new positions now that rolled over onto the county side of the equation and are considered automatically refunded, and that ate probably close to two million dollars in ongoing expenses on an annual basis. So the question becomes now that we're at the point where essentially the county's payroll is exhausting the fund, what do you do to bring back some representative and transparent process? I, I've never been a real bashful individual, as far as forward in my opinion, and I'll certainly do so now. I think it's clear that if you want the support of the community, you have no choice but to go back and start dividing the fund into an in-house and external entity, uh, division based on the historic patterns. Without some action such as that, you, you are already at the point in practicality this year where there is no capability for external agencies to be funded. And if in fact, the goal of the Measure Z is to provide the best service to the community, you cannot make a credible argument that that's accomplished simply by using it as a payroll funding mechanism for the county position. So I would encourage you to give consideration to taking a new look and, and considering very seriously making some sort of division into an internal and external proportionality. And that way, I think you have at least a reasonable chance of making the thing functional in the future. Without that sort of bold decision, it, it will simply become a payroll mechanism for the county, and it will lose whatever support it currently enjoys. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, well, we've had some good comment. Appreciate all that from everybody. And so I'm going to bring it back to Deputy Director and, um, also CAO, see if there's any responses to any of the comments so far or clarifications.
Uh, uh, thank you, Chairman Madron, and, um, thank you, members of the committee and applicants. It's been, uh- It's been, I've been working with this committee for several years, been involved with Measure Z since its inception and before that. And, you know, as I said, when I began this, presenting this item to your board in the way that it was, was unusual. But I think you can see from the urgency that is being expressed by everyone here that information needed to be brought to your board, and we seek direction from there.
Great. Thank you very much for that. And at this point, we're going to go ahead and take a 10-minute break, and we'll reconvene at 10:45 and pick this back up with a fresh board and lots of things to consider. Thank you. Would like CAO Hayes to please give us a quick bit of input.
Thank you, Chairman Madron. I just really wanted to appreciate Chief Day's comment about the challenge that your board is faced with today, and also the challenge that we've been faced with as we draft this report. There are many, many competing priorities and interests in our community for these dollars, and, and we struggled in articulating that in this report. And we struggled articulating the ad hocs ideas, and we struggled to know where your board might sit on some of these topics. And so I just want to say that this board report is, the structure of it and the tone of it is 100% at my direction to Sean, and that he, he has done a good job in, in presenting that data in the most neutral way possible so that we can gain some insight from your board.
I appreciate that, yeah. We can't squeeze blood from a turnip here. That's, I think everybody recognizes that. But what we can do is learn from what's been happening and make plans to try and improve things for next year and going forward. I think we've already received a lot of recommendations on how we, various options for how we might consider doing that. There's just not enough money to go around, and, you know, do we honor commitments we already made last year, et cetera? I mean, there's a lot of very important decisions here to make, and I'm going to go ahead and open it up to the full board at this point. Supervisor Bushnell.
Thank you. First of all, I want to recognize everybody's comments and the work of the Measure Z Committee. It's painful work, especially when there's not enough funding, and all of the applications are worthwhile. And I want to also recognize staff, and I want to thank you for saying that, CAO Hayes. I think the staff report is a little bit different than what we've thought was going to come forward and, and caused a little bit of panic in the community, and so I think that it was important that that was said. I also want to, Justin left, but I want to recognize that Justin, you know, did a really good job, and as an alternate stuck through there for many years, and bid his time, and did the work, and worked his way into the chair, and did a really good job. In the past, when we have done these, we, in, you know, we did these allocations, and then in the future, we had monies that we, you know, came forward, and we had extra monies, and were able to allocate more things, or, you know, we maybe did partials, and then we would allocate fully. Do you anticipate, I'm asking this of CAO Hayes, do we anticipate possibly there might be some more funding coming forward? And then I want to make sure that I'm understanding that we are looking at $670,000 to allocate today, if we so choose.
Well, that Supervisor Bushnell is sort of the golden question. We do think that we have, you know, roughly $200,000 to $300,000 that will be unexpended in the current year. However, due to the volatility of the revenues of Measure Z, we are recommending that we hold off on doing anything with those dollars right now so that that can be a cushion should the Measure Z revenues continue to decline at the rate that they are. We monitor these revenues very closely. We know when they hit our accounts, we're in there looking every single month to see what kind of change is occurring. And a swing of a half million dollars is, is commonplace right now. So it's very difficult for me to say that. We will definitely have funds to roll over and carry forward from the current year. I also have always, and, and will continue to always, take a very conservative approach with Measure Z. I'd much, much rather come to your board with extra dollars than to say, oops, we've got to back some things down. That not only impacts our agency, because we do rely on a significant portion, but that could significantly impact the outside agencies. And so I will always do everything I can to prevent your board from being in such a position.
Okay, thank you for that. And then my second question would be about the ad hoc that was formed. Can you, it would be for Sean, I guess. The members of the ad hoc, can you, who were they?
It was Mr. Zeimer, Mr. Cole, and Ms. Trent.
And who comprised that ad hoc? Who made that ad hoc up?
That was appointed by the committee itself.
Okay. And so, so that I can understand, and maybe my board as well. So the job of that ad hoc, explain again.
The job of the ad hoc was to look at Measure Z, the way that the committee comes to provide recommendations to your board, and then provide recommendations to the committee on ways to revise that process.
So the, the advice to the committee from that ad hoc hasn't happened as of
That's correct.
... yet. But it did come forth in this staff report. Is that correct?
I wouldn't say that. The ad hoc committee did not come to a full recommendation
Okay.
... on, to present. And so some of the, I tried to get across in the staff report, some of the general topics that they talked about.
Okay. Okay. I think I have one question for Chief Day, if he could come up. Hello there.
Good morning.
So my question would be for the Drug Task Force Officer. So the funding, if the funding amount was partially funded, is the City of Fortuna able to make up any funding for that request?
Yeah, it's a good question, Supervisor Bushnell. And I think in that circumstance, you know, we are prepared to look at keeping things in place and being able to fund for the first year. But in light of the current recommendations, I mean, especially for me and my position, that forced me early on to start looking at absolutely every other funding mechanism that was available from, you know, local, state, federal, even outside entities. So, you know, really, the question on my mind right now, and speaking, you know, for our local electeds in Fortuna, is, you know, what that sustainment looks like going forward. So, you know, if it was a case where we did get partial funding, and we were kind of able to get through the year and come back to Measure Z the following year, and see, you know, how successful our application could be, you know, in the following year, that would definitely be something that, you know, would, would help us maintain that position, absolutely.
Okay. And then also, the School Resource Officer, what does that look like if it's partially funded?
It's really difficult. I looked specifically at the COPS grant, which is a federal grant through the U.S. Department of Justice. It's a hiring grant, but you can't supplant funds. So with that particular grant, it's like an all or nothing proposition. So if and when we were to get approval on that, really the only thing we could do is go to our county electeds, this board, as well as some of our state representatives like Senator McGuire, perhaps, or Assemblyman Jim Wood, and ask for a waiver of matching funds. It's not a guarantee, even though Fortuna would be considered a disadvantaged community. It's, it's something that we could apply for and put in for. I just don't want to leave the wrong impression with the board this morning that, you know, that's an absolute. I don't deal in absolutums, and neither does the federal government, so.
Thank you.
Supervisor Arroyo.
Thank you. Well, this is, this is not easy by any means, and I want to thank Glenn Zeimer for those comments about, you know, I think that was a succinct way of framing the circumstance that we find ourselves in and some of those challenges. You're welcome to stay up there if you want, but I didn't have specific questions for you. I'm just going to go through some comments.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. So our staff report, I thought was really helpful and laid out, you know, four areas or four topics of guidance that staff are seeking. And so I thought I'd start with a couple that, that I thought were low-hanging fruit, and then provide my thoughts about our kind of like initial round of discussion here. So one of, and I'm going to go a little bit out of order, so there were four topics that came up. One of them was about use of one-time funding in Measure Z, which have, as we've seen, happens at times. And last year, it was a, a larger amount than usual. And I would put forth that I think one-time costs are appropriate for one-time funding. One-time costs looking like equipment, training, materials, discrete projects that can be completed within a fairly short span of time, given that our contracting process sometimes takes some time as well. So I think that's very appropriate for us to provide guidance on. And then topic one, jumping around a bit again, is positions allocated in the 2022 and 2023 cycle. My understanding is our staff have talked to the departments that submitted some recommendations or requests that were approved for the 2022-23 cycle from county departments, and determined that potentially eight positions that are currently unfilled could be de-allocated with only a somewhat moderate or minimal impact and no layoffs, so in the realm of $108, excuse me, $820,000 roughly. So I'd love for our board to explore that today. And then the other two topics are really large structural questions that I think we need to provide some guidance on, so I appreciate staff bringing this forward. And I honestly appreciate the idea of the percentage-based allocation coming up from the ad hoc. I know I talked to my appointee to the Measure Z Committee, who also provided some input about that idea. And, you know, to sit here and go through the list of projects and decide which is the most needed or wanted in their community really is like cutting the baby in half. I sort of hate that, that euphemism, but it really speaks to how difficult it is and how valuable all of these projects are. So every year that I've seen the Measure Z lists, I've always gone, wow, what an incredible suite of projects that serve the community, throughout our community. And, and I also, now that I'm in this role, while I haven't been able to participate in this process in the, in the past, I, I think about my district, and, you know, so much of it is in the city of Eureka. And, you know, so many votes for Measure O now, you know, came from my district. I remember talking to people about it in the past, on the campaign trail myself, and, and encouraging people to vote for it. And talking with people door-to-door in their neighborhoods about how the city of Eureka has historically gotten a fairly small amount of Measure Z funding, does have other funding sources, but that it was essentially a gesture of goodwill from people who live in the city to support the needs of our rural communities that often have fewer opportunities for funding. And so I, I remember having that conversation about that being a really clear thing that people understood, at least the folks that I spoke with and talked about the pros and cons of that. But people really understood that they were voting to support something that doesn't inherently directly support the, the city or community that they live in. So that, that's kind of an interesting aspect that I, that I just continually think about when it comes to this. And I, I just want to make one more comment about the, the resolution and the ballot measure for Measure O, and how it's a little bit different from Measure Z, and this is something I've been reminiscing on a lot as we approach this conversation, is Measure Z talked about, specifically spoke to providing county services. But the language for Measure O talks about essential general services. And while it does talk about many services that the county provides, it also, I think, leaves a little more room for doubt or need for clarification around what those essential general services are. There's a list of what they are here, and I imagine that people who voted for this were really looking at that list and thinking carefully about it. But ultimately, it talks about continuing to provide citizen oversight and continuing to provide essential general services. So I think that leaves us in the position of needing to maintain some allocation that the Measure Z or Measure O Committee can make through that citizen oversight provision, and needing to come up with something that kind of spreads out the availability of the funding to provide those general services. And I will also note that it said it'll generate approximately $12 million a year. Now, it has been greater in past years, but this year, we're looking at just about $12 million, a little over $12 million that it has generated. So I think, as one of our commenters said, we kind of always knew we would get to this point. And now I'm, I'm in favor of discussing a percentage-based allocation, and I don't think we need to sit here and hammer out the, the numeric percentages today. But I would, I would be in favor of asking our staff to come back with something that more, that after talking more with the Measure Z Committee or the ad hoc, whichever we think is appropriate, to bring something back that, that is reflective of past years and looks at providing percentages to some of the different folks in the community that have, that have received funds in the past and use those effectively.
Supervisor Wilson?
I just want to say I appreciate those comments. Sorry, I just have to drink a water. Mike, your mic? It's on, I'm here. Just, just needed, I just realized I had a frog in my throat there. All right. So, a couple of things. I actually appreciate the observations of, of both supervisors that have spoken here so far, actually, all of them. I want to speak to, it's interesting that, in just kind of on a broad level with relationship to how we, how we, as some of us, and as community members, sold these propositions to our, or, you know, promoted these propositions to our constituents with relationship to where, where the money comes in, where it gets spent. And I think it was our, you know, I think articulated well by Supervisor Arroyo with relationship to the support where the money's mostly coming in, and then where that money gets spent in the community. And I think we're seeing those kinds of same discussions around our RENA numbers, which are the numbers that, that we, that, that the state sort of gives us with relationship to housing. And that R in RENA is regional, but really, we look at it as jurisdictional. And I think, I think we tend to think jurisdictional oftentimes, and we really need more to think regional, and that, I think this, this measure speaks to that. In that, people who live within, say, city jurisdictions do understand that they live in a county, and that the county provides all kinds of benefits and, and things to them outside their district. And so this addresses that, and I just want to make sure that we have that. I think also what's interesting is we've come to a place, and I really appreciate the, the comments of Mr. Zeimer with relationship to, we're, I mean, we're kind of losing oversight if, if all the money goes into the, you know, into those allocated positions. Because, and, and again, one of the things that we really did promote this, this measure on was the transparency in how the money gets spent, and that is through the Measure Z Committee, which made it so, which makes it so unique. There isn't actually another tax in the state that has that much transparency with relationship to process. We're, we're, this is really unique in that way. And so I think, you know, from that perspective, we've been very successful. But we're moving ourselves into a corner in the way that, in some of our past decisions that make that less and less of an impact and less and less relevant. And I think we should take pause with relationship to how we might do that. And I, and I, and I feel like what's, one of the things that's sort of missing for me in this analysis is really sort of the, you know, the frog in the pot analogy with, you know, the water heats up, and this is where you're at. I don't know necessarily, you know, we don't, I don't, I didn't see in here like the full accounting of all of the positions that we've now created as permanent, and what we kind of baked ourselves into. And I wouldn't mind some analysis around that to really take a look at where, where we're at in that. And it's, I know the Measure Z Committee has been probably looking at that and thinking, you know, that's been impactful to, to their, their efforts. With relationship to the one-time funding, I agree with that. been impactful to their efforts. With relationship to the one-time funding, I agree with that part of this. One of the issues I've, we've had for a while is with relationship to the fire chiefs element of this. And I want to say that there's huge appreciation with all the work that's gone into trying to keep those institutions rolling. But we do often, you know, hear and mention that we have, how many fire districts do we have in Humboldt County? Over 40, under 50, somewhere? I mean, it's in that zone somewhere? That's a lot. I mean, and that's a lot of administrative overhead that we need to really think about. Forty-seven? Okay, well, I was, thirty-seven. All right, thirty-seven. Still, that's still a lot of administration we need to, and process, that I think we should be thinking about ways to minimize that, aggregate that. There are counties that only have one fire district in them, you know, that are of substantial size. And so we might want to think about that. We have the same issue around school districts as well. And fundamentally, I think there's some, there's some, there's some good parts about that in terms of, you know, the pride of the local community and those sorts of things. But also, there is just, there's a, there's a lot we can be thinking about as how we move forward with that. And then the mechanisms to reduce expenditures. I agree that, you know, looking at the positions that haven't been allocated and putting a hold on those is something to really consider. Again, I would like to go back and see what we've allocated and kind of consider permanent these days, and really take a look at that. And if that's, and really understand that, especially if we're going to be going into more budget discussions. And just take a sort of a look at that. And then also, I know in the past, we've talked about ways to think about smaller community grant processes. And something that Mr. Zeamer and I have talked about and some others with relationship to, and we had always talked about this idea of having smaller grants that were required to be leveraged, absolutely required, minimum 100%, you know, matching funds, in order to bring community members into the process so that smaller groups within the community have a way to do that. We never have functionally gotten there in terms of the discussion with the, with Measure Z. I'm glad that there's an ad hoc committee that had been created. I hope it continues within the Measure Z to discuss this. And I would recommend that there be some interface with some members of this board to have discussions, like maybe add to that ad hoc, a couple of members of this, or of the board supervisors, to have those conversations about sort of the long-term elements of this. I'm not totally comfortable with making a decision today on spending. And I think we are in such flux at the moment with relationship to the budget. It might be a good time to take a breath. And those are some of my thoughts in no specific order. Thanks.
Supervisor Baum?
Yeah, I'd like to see a little more dialogue between the ad hoc and the regular committee. I'd like to say, I'd like to see all the money go to roads and then take it away from them like we do every year. Sorry, Tom. The fire department, I already told you what I thought. You should have just had Banuku come up here and say, give me the money. But that didn't, David, good to see you. The ballot measures on both Measure Z and Measure O are almost identical, essential services. And then it goes into 9/11, fire, you know, public safety, ambulance, but, you know, children abuse and things like that. First year, I think we were haggling over $8.4 million eight years ago is what we did. So inflation is upon us. On a bad year, we're at 12 million. The two items, I mean, I want fire funded, I want our sheriff funded. I mean, I don't know what, to what level. We were talking in the hall about what Measure Z O has done to our local fire departments. We have given a great upstep to equipment. I remember when all the air bottles came, most of the departments got two sets of fire equipment, both wildland and regular. And it's a big deal, because you're right. I'm a former volunteer. You don't get paid, you just do it. And it's tough to get volunteers. It's just, things have changed. People, what's changed is we used to go to a meeting for an hour every fourth Wednesday, I think, for an hour. And then we ended up at the channy. So we had an hour's worth of training every month. You guys train, I mean, was a couple hundred thousand hours a year or something like that for all your volunteers combined or something? I'm trying to think of what Lon used to do the report. But it's massive. We've been able to provide training towers, you know, updated training towers, which is, I think, the Fortuna one's great. So, but I was talking to Chief Day. We made an agreement the second year of Measure Z to do a drug task or officer out of the Fortuna PD, because Fortuna would be cyclical and not, they'd have to pull their drug task force officer back every once in a while to do patrol for their citizens, which they're charged to do. We funded that. And if you go back seven years on the drug task force and look at the skyrocketing amounts of white drugs, drugs in general, and everything else that has been, has come out of our county, especially our southern part of the county, with that drug task officer getting feedback from his guys on the streets. So that's been a great asset. And school resource officers, I don't care where they are, they do a great job, especially in the day and age. If we can convince our kids, there's a lot better way to do a lot of things. I agree with that. I mean, you guys remember first year, I won't say who, but somebody wanted statues along their sides of their roads, because that would increase tourism and, I'm not saying it's a bad idea, but that would kind of push the limits of what we've thought Measure Z should be. So things are evolving. I think things are going to get better. I'm an optimist. It's half-full, not half-empty. I guess I'm just happy I have a glass, I guess. It's going to be hard to make a decision until I get a full report from the Measure Z committee, what the audit committee came up with. And I agree with that. I appreciate, and I think nobody probably said it better than Chief McCray of how much you volunteers, you're the first one to respond in our rural areas where the fire starts. I know that engine very well because you saw our little fire station in Honeydew. That was, I was there for the dedication about five years ago. And it's, thank goodness for your generosity, wasn't you at the time, but the generosity of CDF to allow that to be built on your property at Honeydew. And that's been a great asset, both to the Cal Fire and to the volunteer fire department in Honeydew. But I've always wondered where the Office of Education comes in on school resource officers. Massive funding, massive funding. And if something is going to help the education of our children to the extent it does, I'd love to find out if Michael Davy Hughes could come in here and talk to us and maybe think about helping our schools. Because as Chief Day said, their officer handles Ferndale, I think they go to Lolita, which, and then, and then south, all through the U River Valley, Cuttingback, you know, all the way Hydesville, all of those out there, and then Southern Humboldt. So I mean, it's, that's a huge, huge thing. And if nothing else, it allows our kids, and you guys do it as volunteers, you guys all take your trucks at one time or another to the school. We want our youth to feel comfortable around our public safety and our law enforcement. We want them to feel comfortable and look up to them, because that makes for a better youth growing up. So I am, because I always agree with him, I'm kind of in Supervisor Wilson's camp on a little more info. I know we have budget constraints. We are still finding out little nuggets of surprise going, oh, we owe that, we owe that. We're coming out of that. Thank you, Cheryl Dillingham. But as we move forward, I've always been happy with what we've been able, I think, $14 million over the years. I see we finally have an agreement with, and we followed through with the firehouse at Redcrest. I know there's, we gave some extra money to Orleans so they could expand and finish their firehouse. I think there are other firehouses going up. And that allows you to have a place to go, pride in the community. And they become a central part of your communities. You do not have a hall. So it's not, somebody says, well, that's a place to go have, once a year, it is a place to go have maybe a barbecue or whatever the case may be, and to honor our volunteers, and have a fundraiser. And as we know, with the sales tax dollar and the excess cash in some of the hitherlands, those fundraisers do not have, the boot isn't getting as full as it used to. So eight years ago, we gave money and I, ambulance services. I think that, that's one of the things we're charged to do in our constitution, right, is ambulance service. With that, I would love to, we talked about this seven years ago, and that was going to be a priority, was to put a parcel tax or something in the areas that need that. I know you guys respond, and I know Blue Lake, it's got expensive to run up and down the highway. I know Willa Creek, and it's expensive there, both for the firefighters and the ambulance service. But there are other routes of funding, and I'm not trying to pawn it off, because they're going to get funded. But I'm just saying those are things we should look at, because we talked about it eight years ago, about taking that route, because that's what needed to be done. And I know Supervisor Sundberg kind of went that route, because it is a specific service to a specific area. But at the time, we considered there was a lot of people that went over there to recreate that were actually utilizing the services. So, yeah, I would love to see a little more feedback from the ad hoc and Measure Z. I know the ad hoc isn't recommendations, but it's sitting here in front of me. So, you know, it doesn't have a big red stripe to it, not a recommendation. We just thought we'd throw this in here. It's a recommendation. So, in any other terms, thank you.
Thank you. And I'll go ahead and share my comments, and that'll have given us, all five of us, and then we'll do another round and see what other thoughts we have on this. I do think there are a few things we can probably do today. And I think there's other things that we need to spend a little more time, get a little more information. For instance, it'd be nice, I think, to appoint two board members to join the ad hoc with the Measure Z committee, and really look at the, how to fix what is obviously, at this point, becoming somewhat broken, in that there's no longer any discretionary money available because of what's happened with salaries. And, you know, we're responsible for that. But I think that we have to look at that. We have to figure out how to change that, because there are so many important things in the community. And we can't just eat up all this money in our county departments, from my perspective. We need to be sure that we're providing help in all these other important services in our community. And that's no easy task. But I think that we could move forward on that with the ad hoc, working with staff, and come back to this board with some recommendations on how to fix that part of it. I do think we could today go ahead and approve that item number three in our staff recommendations, which is to roll over the unspent funding that was already allocated to fire services last year, and was not able to be fully spent because of supply chain issues, staffing issues, pandemic, and all kinds of other things. So I would hope, at the very least, that we could honor the previous commitment we made there, and due to no fault of their own, these funds have not been completely spent. So I would think we could potentially do that today, but we'll see what the board wants to do. I agree, I think ambulance services are crucial. I mean, all of these things are crucial, fire services, SROs, task force, all of this stuff, what John Shelter and his team of people do. And I really like the focus on leveraging, you know, some things don't leverage a lot, others leverage a tremendous amount. It's all important, but I think we could, again, through the ad hoc, maybe look at that a little bit more. As far as de-allocating positions that we approved last year, those 16, you know, I think this is just really kind of the start of our delving into our whole budget, really, in a way. Even though it's not, it's just Measure Z, we are delving into our budget. And we already know that our revenues are way down, and our expenses are up. So that's not a pretty picture. And we're going to have to dig deep to deal with that. And often, that requires to use our reserves. Well, departments also have reserves. They're called trust funds. Some of these trust funds are absolutely pinned down to specific things that they can be used for, like certain, certain funds within the sheriff's department for confiscation and other kinds of things have requirements on them. But within each of the departments, there are trust funds that may have some flexibility to be able to be used to step up and help cover some of these positions. So I would like to look at that more carefully, because I think it's all hands on deck. You know, we've got to look at all of our funds. And that includes our trust funds in terms of how we're going to balance these budgets and take care of these things, because we do need ambulance, we do need fire services and these other things. I do not want to see us de-allocate the public works positions for the mowing crews, because that's a huge leverage. And, you know, when we think about fires, I mean, there's three ways they start. Lightning strikes, power lines going down, and roadside starts from chains dragging and cigarettes. And of those three, the one we can actually do something about is roadside vegetation. And our roads are a mess. And it's not due to the lack of staff working hard, it's lack, lack of staffing. We had hoped with our big wage increase last year that we were going to actually turn that tide on recruitment and retention, but then inflation hit, right? So a lot of that increase really got eaten up in gasoline and other expenses in life. So we've still got a big issue there with vacancies and recruitment and retention. So I think there's a lot more to discuss here in terms of where we're going today, and what sort of direction we might be able to provide staff in terms of moving forward swiftly. I don't think we want to dilly-dally around here. I think we need to be able to move forward quickly with some additional recommendations. But I think it'd be foolish to try and make all those decisions today. So that's my two cents.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Thank you. Through the chair. I also agree that the rollover for the fire is something that I am going to advocate for today. As far as where I stand on allocations today, fire's top on my list. And the, I want to say sheriff, but I don't want to say sheriff inclusive. It's sheriff, it's city of Fortuna, city of Riedel, police. For my district, those departments are crucial, and roads are also crucial in an unincorporated area. I do recognize that what Supervisor Arroyo said. However, I'm not willing to make decisions on a percentage basis without knowing what that does to any department. I also don't want to de-allocate positions without knowing what that does. And so, you know, I think, I don't know if we're in a position to put someone on this board. I don't know if it's on, I don't think it's part of our agenda that we could put two members from this board on the ad hoc. I don't think it's on the agenda. I'm going to look at council over there.
We, what we do have on the agenda to review and consider alternative processes for funding and provide recommendations. So I think that your board could designate two ad hoc members to evaluate Measure Z in collaboration with the Citizens Advisory Committee and their ad hoc. You're not actually appointing them to the Citizens Advisory Committee, but a partnership.
So, you know, when I look at Measure Z, you know, I always, top on my list is what it does for my district and what's most important in my district. And fire is so crucial in the rural areas. And, and police is so crucial in the rural areas, and ambulance, and roads. And so that's a, that's a big ticket. I know that there's always been a lot of questions about Star Ambulance and, you know, Southern Trinity, but 36, just like the Kama ambulance, comes into Humboldt. And also, Ruth Lake, they come into Humboldt and they shop into Humboldt. When I was first elected, that was my first question, why are we funding Southern Trinity? Well, I know why we fund Southern Trinity. And also, what it means for survival with an accident out there. And so it is very important to them for survival for that ambulance, and also what it means to the people in that area. So I, too, am not ready to make decisions. But I do think the one decision that I could make is the rollover for the fire. Other than that, I would like to come back with, you know, with all of the suggestions, with the consequences that would be, that we would have that information and know what we're talking about, and have an educated decision before we make those suggestions.
Great, thank you. Supervisor Arroyo?
I'll go ahead and make a motion to that effect, and then we'll see where that lands. So I move that we carry forward the Fire Chiefs Association balance and authorize the county administrator the county administrative officer to work with them for a flexible spending plan. Um, I also would include that we, that the CAO's office bring back recommendations about, um, a policy establishing, uh, guidance for one-time funds to be spent on one-time projects, a percentage-based allocation scenario, um, and this would be in cooperation with the Measure Z ad hoc, um, and information about what positions could reasonably be reallocated from the 2022, 2023 year, and information about the status of the Measure Z audit.
Second.
I would like to add myself to. All second, but could I add myself to the ad hoc? We had talked about that, if the motioner is okay. Add two members.
We have a motion and a second, we're asking for clarification on the members that might be included, and you're volunteering to be one of them. Is there another member of the board that would like to volunteer to be the second person on that? Supervisor Wilson, so we'll add those two to the, uh, motion, if that's okay with the motion maker and the second.
That is accepted, and then I'm the second.
It's not voted on yet, so.
I.
Supervisor Bone.
No.
Okay. Um, all right, uh, did you get all that, Nikki? That was a, a lot of stuff.
I did.
You're, you're great, good job. Um, it was an all-encompassing motion, I think, in trying to take at least one action today to roll forward, uh, the fire, uh, services monies, but also to set up the ad hoc, to work on numerous items. Supervisor Wilson.
Yes, clarifying question.
Yep.
Relationship to the ad hoc part of this. Do we, and this is a question for the board and just pro- and staff process, do we want to really just kind of create a separate ad hoc that's board-based, and then ask, you don't, you know what I'm saying, other than join an ad hoc of, of a committee? Um, I'm just trying to like, clarify roles here.
County Council, please.
Yes, I believe that it would be procedurally best for an ad hoc committee of two board members to be formed to work with the ad hoc committee that has been formed for the Measure Z Committee, rather than appointing, um, two board members to the ad hoc, or the Measure Z Committee's ad hoc.
Okay, so let's just assume that's in the language, if that's okay with the motion maker and the second.
Yep, motion maker and second, good there on that clarification?
Sounds great. May I also add a clarification? Um, when I said percentage-based allocations, um, one of the items in the staff report, and I can't find it right now, but was about, um, or maybe it was just in discussion with staff, was about mid-year surprise revenues, um, being considered one-time allocations that the Measure Z Committee, I would assume, would come back together to make, um, or would be based on, uh, the Measure Z Committee's recommendations. Um, so, that, that was intended, that, that was my intent, but I didn't specify it, and my intent was also that, that percentages potentially include cities, um, and, and those who have received funding in the past, so, um, I hope that was clear, that was definitely part of the staff recommendation, or the, um, staff report, excuse me, um, but, um, my hope was that the scenarios that come back could reflect, um, that as at least one alternative.
Right, that's the way I understood it, that we'd be, uh, that committee would be looking at alternatives in regards to that. One of them was laid out pretty clearly in the staff report, with a, a chart that showed previous allocations and suggest, and, and percentages, average percentage basis is, that might be used as an option, but there's also been suggestions in the past that, why don't we just fix the fixed cost part at 70% and keep the discretionary cost at 30%? So there are numerous options that I'm hoping this committee would be looking at, not constrain themselves to one or two, but look at, what are the reasonable options to be able to, uh, make sure that we have discretionary money in the future, or funding for all these other services that are so critical. I also want to use this as an opportunity to commend the Fire Chiefs Association, Sean, Alicia, Sabell Emmett and her staff, for all the work, along with Supervisor Bushnell and Bone, to work with Southern Humboldt on consolidating departments. I mean, we recognize this is a huge issue, and I want to commend you all in that effort that you've made to do that down there, and to go out to the community asking for new assessments. That was, what was it, 82% and 89%? I mean, how often do things pass with that kind of strong community support? So, uh, I think that's kind of a trend we're going to see, we're starting in on a lot of that on Northern Humboldt, it's a little more complicated, but, uh, I believe Supervisor Bushnell has like 22 volunteer fire departments, or fire agencies within her district. I have 11, uh, and, uh, the others have a, a few less, but it is a really big deal when we think about the administrative costs of all that and everything, so the future is consolidation, and figuring out how we get there is the question, right? At any rate, um, any other comments from the board? Supervisor Bone, did you have a comment?
Yeah, and, and the other thing we have to evaluate is, since the inception in 2014, and, you know, it passed with, I believe, 56%. Um, then in 2018, Measure O passed by 75%. So it's working, you know, things have changed, funding has changed, but Measure Z was working, the community thinks, that's, that's a pretty big jump to get that kind of thing, and we, and, the thing is, and I fought it, I fought it, got my derriere handed to me, with no daylight, you know, we didn't daylight, it's impending unless it's voted down, and I thought that was a terrible idea, but the public, public liked it, because it went to 76%. With that being said, what has happened in the last eight years, and has spurred, some of the municipalities have passed their own public safety sales tax, and some have passed a couple of them. So, you know, to, to, to follow, you know, maybe our lead, or whatever the case may be, and we all need to work off each other when we talk about that, because a lot of our unincorporated peoples go into the municipalities and the municipalities, and the other side goes the other way. So when you, when you do that, um, we share dollars all the time, so as we, as we move forward, I think it's important to, um, notice that the, the community, the community has a lot of faith in our public safety, all the way down from, I mean, when we talk about the police, sheriff, fire, paid and volunteer, you know, we get, I, I know that 87% of all fire departments in the United States are volunteer, but our paid departments are, you know, outstanding in their own right, you know, and, and, and they, they sometimes take on the lead of, uh, helping a lot of the smaller departments in clerical and things like that, so good job, Sean and, and Justin, I don't know if he did, and stuff like that, because I know you get leaned on quite a bit, because I know the, the whole thing is, well, come on, you guys are paid, so, um, so I appreciate that. So as we move forward, our citizens want it to be spent the way we asked it to be spent there, hopefully we can all, you know, do it the right way. Um, I don't worry as much about the first district, I kind of worry about the county as a whole. I know we're elected to our districts, but the way, you know, a ri- a rising tide raises all the ships, so if one of us is doing well, we're all going to do well. So hopefully we can get a consensus amongst all of us to do what's right for everybody in the county. Thanks.
Thank you, Supervisor Bone, and I think you're seeing here a strong commitment on the part of this board to work together and solve these problems as best as we can. So Supervisor Arroyo, final thoughts?
I just, um, wanted to clarify, uh, the CAO, uh, asked about whether, what the intent was with the statement about the audit, so that was my effort to incorporate the question or the concern that Supervisor Bone raised, um, and since this is my first round of Measure Z, I will just ask, um, for advice, um, what, how can that be clarified, uh, for, you know, advice from this board, uh, and Supervisor Bone in particular, what, what could we add to that to clarify the intent of that part of the motion about the audit?
I know that the ballot language says there'll be an annual audit.
CAO, hey, excuse me, just a second.
Yeah, Supervisor Bone, you had, you had said you'd sort of like an accounting of what positions, um, are currently allocated to what departments and, and maybe somewhat of, oh, was that you that said that? Okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
That was Wilson, Supervisor Wilson.
So then if you're, if you're seeking an annual, uh, an audit of the overall Measure Z expenditures, which we did, um, I don't, two, two or three years ago, uh, that would require an allocation of funding, that was about $50,000 at that point in time, um, otherwise if there's something, maybe we could do internally to provide some level of information on the services being provided.
Supervisor Bushnell.
So clerk, clarification from this board, who mentioned audit, because I didn't hear it?
It was mentioned in the, in the motion, interpreting what Supervisor Wilson said, I believe.
So, no, I, I heard it from Supervisor Bone, but I, I may have been mistaken, so.
So I heard Supervisor Bone talk about the audit process from the auditor's office, but not about this, um, Measure Z specifically, so maybe we could remove that?
I'm fine striking it from the motion, and just asking that those recommendations be brought back with information about, um, you know, what fun, what, what internal operations and positions are, are, are part of that mix of funding. That's the information that I think we all need and that the public needs. Um, I misunderstood the item about the audit.
The second is fine with that.
Supervisor Wilson.
But to clarify, I, I wasn't asking for an audit-level review, but I would actually like what Supervisor Arroyo is speaking to, and I'm hoping that the motion carries, which is a review of the position makeup with relationship to where we're at.
I think we understand the motion now.
Very thanks.
Thank you.
Supervisor Bone.
So, I'm really confused about what I said now. Um, but if you're going to do that, wouldn't you just call the, the departments and ask them how many people are funded through Measure Z, just to, I mean, it's, it, I don't want the 50,000 version, I want the cliff note version.
We, we have that information readily available, certainly, and we can obtain a, a somewhat of a brief and succinct narrative from departments on what services are being provided through those allocations.
And I think, we get, there's some positions that are, you know, volunteers, obviously they're not positions, they're equipment, so they can get volunteers to fill those, fill those seats, and I don't think we're, I'm trying to think, we don't actually give any money to Sean, or to Russ, or, uh, Justin, I don't think we give any money to the paid departments, I, and I, you know, and, and directly for, for things like that. Um, I know we latched on to Sean when we bought the, the air tanks originally and stuff like that, to get a bigger discount, and, but positions allocated for some of the departments, and to see what I've seen, um, over the years since its inception, um, one of our successes and, and is, is when Maggie came and said, I don't have enough positions, and, and if you'll notice, the only bottleneck we have now in the courts is the courts themselves, is judges and courtrooms. We're getting stuff in front of, we're getting stuff charged, we don't have a stack of uncharged things, it's just getting them in the queue, so there are advantages, what we did originally, and, and I know to maintain that, we can't live off of grants, and as we see our state budget, but that, that well is run dry, they're running out of ink, so we are going to have to be creative.
Okay, I believe we have our voting tabs up. Nope, we're going to do a roll call.
We'll have to do a roll call. Okay, Supervisor Arroyo?
Yes.
Supervisor Madron?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yep.
Supervisor Bushnell? Yes, and thank you for everybody that came, and all, all your comments. And Supervisor Bone?
Yep.
Thank you, motion passes 5-0.
Great, thank you, everybody, appreciate it, stay tuned, I'm sure you will. And with that, we're going to jump to our next item on the agenda, which is item G1, SB 20, by Senator Rubio, which is the Regional Housing Trust Fund State Framework, and a support letter has been suggested. Supervisor Wilson.
Thank you.
Cleared the House.
Hold on, let me move my papers around, so I can get back to that. Yeah, the really fun stuff, housing, whoop, whoop, okay. All right, well, I, I wanted to just, honestly, just bring this particular item to the attention of the board, I, I think it fits within our legislative mandate already, um, but it's a bill that speaks to, uh, one of the goals, uh, in the discussions we've been having about a regional housing trust fund, and, uh, and it just so happens that there is a legislator, um, Senator Rubio, who, uh, created, um, you know, outside the discussions we've ever had about it, um, a, a bill that supports regional housing trust funds, and supports the ability to create a, a joint powers authority, um, around, uh, counties and cities, working together, and we, and as I just mentioned before, the Rena numbers are not necessarily regional, they're actually jurisdictional, I like to call them Gina numbers, they're not actually, you know, and so we, we need to start moving in our discussion around housing, uh, with regional strategies, because not all housing is the same, um, and so this bill just provides a tool, uh, to help us get there, and I know there's some staff that might have, do you guys have any comments on it? Not really, okay. So anyways, I just wanted to, uh, put this out there, it's, it's supported by, um, a whole bunch of, uh, of groups, including CivicWell, and East Bay YIMBY, and Livable California, and Napa Salano for Everyone, and Northern Neighbors, all kinds of communities have been supporting this organization, or this, this, this bill, and it's been getting, uh, unanimous votes through the process, so I expect it will probably happen. The next phase of this, it, I, I will say, it really focuses on low and low-income housing as its, as its primary target, but it's not limited that in particular, but I know reg- in our region, we are talking also about, um, sort of, uh, I don't, I wouldn't call it industry-level housing, but worker, worker housing around medical workers and teachers and those sorts of things. This doesn't quite address that specifically, but it's the first step in that direction, and we are hoping to have those conversations more. So with that, I just would like to see us support this, um, you know, wholeheartedly, and that's all I wanted to put out there. And I'm willing to make a motion after we have public comment, if there is any.
Thank you, Supervisor Wilson. Any, uh, questions, clarifications from the board? Okay, we'll go to Zoom, and, um, if you're on Zoom, star nine to raise your hand. Seeing no hands up in Zoom, I'm going to go to those here in the audience today. Anybody here would like to make a public comment? Seeing no movement towards the podium, we'll bring it back to the board. We have a, uh, item before us, any further thoughts, Supervisor Bone?
What, what, I know your CivicWell group has supported this, I'm wondering, what, what does this look like? Who is, who is your, uh, who would be your regional housing trust? What do you have in mind for your regional housing trust? Because I know we've had homeless, we, we've had a lot of trusts, or a lot of different avenues, what, what looks like, where are you thinking to go with that regional housing trust?
It would be, we've talked about housing trust fund here at the county, so it would be, this would allow us to actually work with cities, to actually do one, like a JPA working together, like we do for, uh, our energy JPA, or, or transit JPA. Um, so this would be specific around housing, so we can both leverage more money, because, you know, to work together on that, but then also really work on strategically where we're going to focus those areas, so that we can, you know, do the best we can as a, as a region. That's really, that's what it is. Yeah, just like how we do on those other elements. And I want to say this, uh, you know, the, uh, staff from various departments have reviewed it, and commented, and even offered comments, uh, directly to the, to the author, uh, on this, um, and had discussions, and I, and so it's not unknown, uh, within our staff, and, uh, with that, I'd like to make a motion to approve this letter of support.
Okay, we have a motion by Supervisor Wilson to approve the letter of support.
All second.
And we have a second by Supervisor Arroyo. Any final comments? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and, uh, vote on this? Are we doing a roll call?
Roll call vote, yes.
Okay.
Okay, Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Madron?
Yes.
Supervisor Arroyo?
Yes.
Supervisor Bone? Thank you, motion carries 5-0.
Fantastic, all right, we're moving right along. Our next item is our item HI, a report on the DHHS Public Health Syringe Services Program. And we've got both, uh, Public Health Director and, yep, our Public Health Officer, welcome.
Good to see you both.
Thank you. Okay, well, good morning, Chair and your board, I'm Sophia Prer, Public Health Director.
And I'm Candy Stockton, Health Officer for Humboldt County.
And we are here- Thank you. Okay. Well, good morning, Chair and your board. I'm Sophia Prair, Public Health Director.
And I'm Candy Stockton, Health Officer from Humboldt County.
And we are here today to do a presentation around our syringe services program that we run in public health. We bring this report to your board about every two years. We're probably slightly off cycle because some things happened in the past couple of years that took our attention elsewhere. But we are excited to be back on track and providing this presentation to you all. So we'll, so just really quick, just for your board's benefit and the community's benefit, just really quickly about what syringe services programs, SSPs, are. So SSPs are community-based programs that provide access to sterile syringes free of cost and promote safe disposal of used needles. And as described by the CDC, U.S. Department of Health and Human Services, and California Department of Public Health guidance, SSPs are effective and are one piece of a comprehensive and integrated approach to preventing HIV, hepatitis C overdose, and other bloodborne diseases such as bacterial infections like MRSA.
So let's talk a little bit about the program benefits. Whenever we deal with chronic health conditions of any kind, we're always looking at mitigating the harm to the individual who suffers from that disease as well as the cost to the community around them. So some of the things that SSPs provide above and beyond the, the most obvious one, the syringe exchange that, that always seems to be people's highest area of interest. They also increase access to drug treatment programs and referrals for other healthcare and mental healthcare services, as well as basic human services, referrals for housing assistance, insurance, and, and other social services. They do decrease the incidence of HIV, hepatitis B, hepatitis C, and bacterial infections in communities where they're functioning. Evidence has shown over and over again that communities that have strong thriving syringe services programs actually have lower levels of syringe litter than areas that do not have those programs. Those programs also provide free HIV and hepatitis C testing and linkage to treatment and provide a good location for high-yield education about overdose prevention, naloxone distribution, and other harm reduction services.
So just a little bit about our specific program. What, our program in public health was approved by the Board of Supervisors back in 2012. And as Dr. Stockton was referring to, our SSP is really one aspect of our harm reduction program. The program currently operates a mobile van that provides a variety of services throughout the county, meeting people where they are at, both physically and psychologically. And the harm reduction program services include the syringe exchange and disposal, overdose prevention education, and naloxone distribution, the HIV/CHV rapid testing prevention counseling, care coordination, which I'll talk a little bit more about in a little bit, and linkages to medical treatment, and then linkages to substance use disorder and mental health treatment as well. Also just wanted to direct your attention to a summary of activities over the past three years. So we broke down how many syringes were collected by our team, the number of syringes that were distributed, unique client counts. And I do want to draw your attention for, you can see in 2020, you know, about 1,000, unique client counts in 2021, about 1,100. And then you see a drop in 2022, and that's because we had some gaps in staffing. There was some turnover and we needed to hire folks. And so just wanted to acknowledge why there's a significant decrease in unique client counts. It was just doing to those gaps in staffing. You can also see an increase in naloxone kit distribution over the past three years. Our team has worked really hard on increasing access. And then also for the reporting that our staff have been able to receive, you can also see an increase in OD reversals reported. But that's just specific to our program staff. And, you know, that's something that's being tracked at a community level as well through RXF Humboldt. But that's specific to our program, those numbers as well.
So why are these services so important? First of all, hepatitis C, HIV, these are serious health risks to all of our community members. And keeping our baseline rates lower or suppressed where we can is very important for our community, as well as purely looking at the number of deaths that we're experiencing from opioids and specifically fentanyl. So you can see those numbers have increased dramatically over the last couple of years. You can also see that, that that year of 2022 represents death of 69 Humboldt County residents, 74 people total in Humboldt County from fentanyl overdoses. And if you compare that with the number on the last screen, you see there were 271 reversals during that same time period associated with our programs. So only imagine how much higher those overdose death rates would be without the significant amount of work that's been happening, not only through public health, but through multiple members of our community to make naloxone more available for reversals. And our first quarter trends from this year look very slightly increased over last year. So during this period last year, the first quarter of the year, we had 15 fentanyl-related deaths in Humboldt County. We're at 16, maybe 17 for the first quarter of this year. So, so pretty similar rates in spite of the fact that we're seeing increasing potency of fentanyl and increased percentages of drugs that are contaminated with fentanyl. So those harm reduction efforts are working at saving lives in our community, and we do need to keep them engaged in whatever ways we can.
And lastly, just wanted to talk a little bit about our HCV hepatitis C care coordination program that we launched back in January 2022. So this is under our North Coast AIDS Project. And through, so over the years, we've received funding through CMSP. That's supported a lot of this work. And back in, in early 2022, we subcontracted with Open Door Community Health Centers to provide HCV clinical services. And this contract included a data sharing agreement and access to their electronic medical records so that we could enhance that care coordination between public health and Open Door. Also included in this care coordination is ASIS, a local methadone clinic. And so they began testing all their clients for HIV and HCV upon enrollment and referring them to public health. And so our HCV care coordinator established a formal partnership, a referral process, and weekly case conferences with ASIS. In February 2022, Open Door, as a part of their subcontract, hired an internal HCV navigator to establish a single point of contact for program entry with the public health HCV care coordinator. These classifications start to get a little confusing. So we have our care coordinator, there's a open door navigator, and they established a weekly client case conference meeting as well to enhance that care coordination between the agencies. And so our care coordinator has been doing outreach and presentations about this new HCV prevention program to community partners that provide services to people who use drugs and the Latinx community. And then in May 2022, the North Coast AIDS Project was, was awarded a new care coordination grant from CMSP. And that's the one that we received. That's $1.5 million over three years. So a substantial grant to help us expand and continue this work. And so this grant supports two new health education specialists as care coordinators and also supports half, half of an FTE of a senior health education specialist who serves as a staff lead for the harm reduction program. In November of 2022, three HCV care coordinators were hired to support individuals who test positive for HCV in accessing medical treatment and the cure. And the care coordinators received their state certifications as HIV/CHV test counselors. And just this spring, we've hired already one community health outreach worker who I've learned is really fantastic. And we're in the process of hiring a second one. And once that is, our program is staffed in that way, we'll be able to launch a second mobile outreach van to reach the better, the rural parts of the community and improve access. So just wanted to give an overview of that because this, this work is all connected to each other with our SSP. And so with that, we're happy to take any questions.
Any questions from the board? Supervisor Arroyo?
I saw the items about kiosk disposal, and I was wondering if you could remind me of what the kiosks, like where they're located and what that program looks like or what that element of the program looks like.
Yeah, absolutely. And Michael, I may want you to come up if there's any that I'm, that I'm missing here. But in the report, that's included in your board packet, you know, DHHS since December 2017 has been providing a syringe disposal through five outdoor medical waste disposal kiosks. And so one is located at Public Health, 529 I Street. One is at Social Services, so 929 Costa Street, one at Behavioral Health, 720 Wood Street, and then one in Hoopa downtown. And so those are the ones that are specific to DHHS. And then also our program also does help in terms of, excuse me, the, the syringe disposal boxes as well and making sure those get out. And Michael, I don't know if there's anything you wanted to add.
We are in the process of.
Would you mind coming up? Sorry.
We are also in the process of working to install a kiosk.
You gotta press the button. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Michael Weiss, Program Coordinator with North Coast AIDS Project Public Health. We are also in the process of installing a kiosk in Southern Humboldt as well.
Great. Thank you. Supervisor Arroyo?
Thank you. I, I have two questions. I know you mentioned that the reversal data for overdose reversal was essentially, it sounds like that's people reporting to public health. Does law enforcement also provide information about overdose reversal?
I wouldn't have that information. I don't know if you have any thoughts.
So there isn't a unified tracking system for overdose reversal at this point. There are a number of different systems. So the OD maps, which first responders and law enforcement do report to intermittently, as well as a less formalized process of different organizations reporting to RXF Humboldt. And it looks like Michael may have some additional information.
We don't have a, a regular communication with the different departments of police. There are different jurisdictions. We did have a relationship with Eureka Police, and we were getting regular monthly reports. They've had a turnover in staff, and so we're trying to reestablish that.
Great. Okay. Supervisor Bushnell?
Thank you. I'm through the chair. I'm wondering, do you have a amount of needles that are being due quarterly? How many have you handed out?
Yeah, let me.
And this is more for the public. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. So for, and this is for collected, you said?
No, handed out.
Oh, handed out. Yeah. Okay. So for distributed in 2020, and actually, I don't know if it would be helpful to pull up the slide again if, for, if the community is watching to, and I can go to that slide real quick. Okay. Thank you. Just because visually it can be helpful for folks. Yeah. So syringes distributed back in 2020, about 715,000. 2021, about 466,000. And then in 2022, about 315,000.
Okay. And then there's not a way to tell, to know how many are collected?
And we do have the number above of how many are, how many our staff have collected as well. But that also, you know, there may be other collection points that are not under DHHS's purview. So we wouldn't have the totality of all, all syringes collected.
Okay. Specifically, our mobile outreach vans that go out into rural communities and do distribution, they're not there on a daily basis. But the medical sites that are located in those areas do collect syringes back. And so we wouldn't be accounting for those syringes that are turned in the other six days of the week or 13 days, two-week cycle, that the van isn't out there. They would be turned into the different medical sites and disposal kiosks.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Yes. Supervisor Bone?
And we're not doing an exchange anymore. We're just giving needles out, right? We don't do the 50 for 50 or 25 for 25?
So interestingly, the, the best scientific practice around that, the evidence basis has, has shown for several years that that is not the most effective way to do, to do things. And you actually get better return and better buy-in when you actually engage people where they're at. So we provide the syringes that are necessary for their safety, and we both collect back syringes and ensure other ways of safe collection of those syringes. But the data around that is really pretty clear that, that requiring a one-for-one exchange actually decreases participation with the syringe services programs, which leads to ultimately increased syringe litter and increasing rates of infectious diseases among those individuals. So, so in answer to your question, no, we do not require one-to-one exchange.
So basically, responsibility lies within, there is no responsibility. You just come, you get needles, and if you want to bring them back, you bring them back. There's no requirement based. Science says that's the best thing, right? Is that what you said?
Well, I would say that, that that is maybe not the most accurate to say that there's no responsibility, that, that all medical care revolves around building a relationship and an alliance towards progress. So to, to say that, I don't think you were saying, but that could be interpreted to say that we're just essentially handing out needles willy-nilly to people. And what we're doing is actually working with them to build relationships to help them be more responsible in their care. And that does result in more needles being turned back in. So, so yes, we have the same goal you have, which is to keep as many syringes out of circulation and in safe locations as possible. But we might describe it a little differently, I suppose.
My interpretations are always different. Trust me.
Supervisor Bushnell?
What is the criteria to, to receive a syringe?
Specific criteria? I don't know those off the top of my head.
Is there, is there any, or you just come to the van and say, I need a syringe?
Michael, could you maybe speak to the process of when someone is receiving services?
Absolutely. So our outreach workers, when they meet with people in the street, we do an assessment of need and assessment of use and assessment of, of history with a person. And that's part of building the relationship. And in that is really kind of identifying what the person's need in the moment is. It's not just somebody saying, I want 200,000 syringes and here you go. It's really like, how many are using? How often are you using? Are you sharing? You know, how do we reduce all of that? And then identifying those needs and then working with the person on that level.
I have one, I'm not, so do, you can stay up there. Do, does a person get more than one syringe at a time or what according to their need? Thank you. And then we're in Southern Humboldt. Do, are you, have you identified a place where you're going to put the, the kiosk?
The public health office.
Oh, the public health office. Okay. Thanks.
Supervisor Bone?
So, and I guess we see where, well, we dropped down, but we, we see that we distributed 378,000, I don't have the slide up there, syringes. And so unique case count was, client count was 1,000. So in 2020, is that, and I don't know what a unique client is, but what, so did we give 714,000 broke down into a, how many different, how many people did that serve? Not just, but do you keep track of how many people come in? Because I know they can get 50 or 100 depending on usage. How many actual clients get syringes? Just for the public's knowledge, how many people use 714,000?
So that is the unique client count that's directly under those lines in the column. So in 2020, it would be 1,059 people.
So that would be an average of 70,000 of client? Is that?
700.
So, I mean, excuse me. 700.
700. So a little under two per day. I can tell you that my husband, who is an insulin dependent diabetic, goes through somewhere around 2,000 needles a year.
And I'm glad you brought that up. We do not, is there any, is there any program that we have that for diab, youth diabetics or, you know, youth insulin users or any insulin users that are having trouble getting their needles or paying for their needles? Do we have a program for that also?
Specifically, no, because it is mandated to be covered by all insurances. So.
I agree.
Yeah. So there isn't a specific program for them. I can tell you that, that FQHC is federally qualified health centers who serve underserved populations do have a number of programs in place to help meet individual needs for clients who are having issues. But there aren't, there isn't a large enough population of, you know, childhood diabetes to, to, and particularly not ones that are uncovered by insurance, to mandate a program specifically for that.
Okay. Okay. I believe we're ready to have a motion to receive and file this report.
I was going to say so moved, but it sounds like there's another comment.
Okay. Let's have the final comment.
I'll second. I just want to thank the, our public health officials and workforce on this really super delicate and, but important work with relationship to keeping our rates of HIV down, keeping our rate of hepatitis down, trying to engage with folks who are the hardest to, to reach. I think it's, it's really important. The conversation around needles is always very uncomfortable because, you know, for most of us, it is something that we avoid in general with relationship to not wanting. with relationship to not wanting them in our bodies. But then also, when you see them, you know, maybe lying around and those sorts of things, because there is such in these needle litter that it creates a feeling of anxiety around safety and all of the other things. And yet, this is still important work, and yet, we're still trying to address those things. And we do know we have casualties within our community when we don't help in this way. And so, I just want to like, thank you for that hard work and reaching into those spaces and being here to help educate us and everybody else. So, thank you.
Thank you. Really quick, if I may, just since Michael is standing up here, I just really want to give Michael Weiss, our Program Services Coordinator for North Coast AIDS Project and Harm Reduction Program, an incredible amount of credit. He has built an incredible team that does this work day in, day out throughout the county, and we truly cannot do it without him. So, since you're standing up here, I just want to recognize you for that.
Thank you for that. Supervisor Bushnell.
Thank you, through the chair. Also, I'm going to say it, nobody has in this room, but this, I thank you guys for your work as well. There's always been a lot of controversy around the needle exchange program and whether it is works, whether it doesn't work. I know science says, you know, that it does. But then, you know, you have the public that says, "Well, I see a million needles laying all over." And I know there's this big elephant in the room. I know you guys feel it. So, you know, I do appreciate the work. And I just want to recognize that, you know, throughout Humboldt, through, since this program has been started, there's been a lot of controversy around it. It proves that it is, you know, working. It's better than not having something, and so I appreciate that. I appreciate the work you do. But I just do want to recognize that it has, you know, there is a lot of opinions and a lot of thoughts around it and whether it, you know, anyways, I just want to recognize that. And I do appreciate the work and bringing the, you know, the work that's done in Southern Humboldt as well. And it's really hard in a rural area like that, and so I just want to say thank you.
Yes, thank you, Michael. And Oceana says hello. She misses working with you.
Taylor, hi. We miss working with her.
So, we have a motion by Supervisor Arroyo and a second. Yeah, it actually happened kind of under the breath, sort of. So, I'm just clarifying that we have a motion and a second. And I believe we're ready for, it was Supervisor Wilson was the second. It happened very quick while other comments were being made. Apologize for that. So, let's go ahead and take a vote. Roll call.
Chair Madron, I just have to ask a question. Did we take public comment on this?
No, we did not. Thank you very much. So, we'll take public comment on this. Do we have any hands up in Zoom? Yes, we have a hand up in Zoom. 7718, this is your chance to comment. Sorry, I almost forgot you.
Well, I want to remind you the next time I have a chance. So, thank you for it. I already, I think this is a perfectly timed public comment, so we can hear the back and forth, you know, right before you vote. And if we have something very important to say, maybe you can keep in mind or not, rather than having it first thing off the bat. So, anyway, I did, you know, Humboldt County planning and building has something called a, has or have something called a common sense principle. And I can give, I can not, in any way, shape, or form, I can use all kinds of different common sense, understand why requiring somebody to exchange a needle for a needle wouldn't bring more of them off the streets. There was some theme about establishing a relationship. To me, that makes no sense. I think the other thing sounded like it was working. Maybe I'm just dumb or something, but common sense would say, make change process would have a person be more motivated to either write the needle in directly for exchange. That's just my comment on this topic, makes no difference.
Thank you, commenter. And anybody here in the room today want to speak on this item? This is your opportunity to come forward, and I don't see any. So, we'll close public comment and back to the board Supervisor Arroyo.
Thank you. Just hearing the comments from the board, I wanted to kind of put my two cents in and say that I also greatly appreciate the work you're doing around this topic. And I know it's, it can be uncomfortable for people. But I do think that part of our role should be to speak about this from a perspective of understanding the science and encouraging people to utilize these resources that can change people's lives. And I know it is difficult to think about de-stigmatizing behaviors that many of us do stigmatize. But I think that is the way to get people to come forward, utilize the services, build the relationships, and take better care of their health and our community's health as a whole. So, I encourage us to find the best ways that we can to do that as a community and as a board.
Thank you. Supervisor Wilson.
I just want to address the exchange thing just for a minute. I imagine the reason why it works better is that people are not addicted to needles. They're addicted to the substances that the needles deliver. And so, there's not really a motivation necessarily to, you know, you, we, our motivation is to not have sharing, not have reuse, and to have safe or at least safer habits amongst people and save lives. That's really the motivation. And if there's anything we can do to help that happen, then I think, I understand the policy. That's how I interpret it. I don't need an answer necessarily, but it just seems common sense to me, that's all.
Okay, and so now we're getting into all of our different opinions. I hope, and we're not going to go back and forth forever. I think that everybody has their own opinions, and that's fine.
I think what I asked got blown out. Thank you for what you do. I just wanted, there is a large segment of the community that wants to know why. And that, and what we're talking about is education here. And what we've done with this board over the, and I've only been here 11 years, what we've done is allowed you to do this and flourish in what you're doing. And I think that's something we should all be proud of. So, as we'd ask, people ask about the exchange, because I get calls every week, "What do I do with this pile of needles I have at my house?" Actually, I usually call the sheriff's department or you guys and have somebody, or I ask them to throw them in a safe container and then put them, you know, take them to, some of the pharmacies will take them and stuff like that. I think you're doing a great job when it comes to that. But we're not trying to stigmatize or anything else when we ask questions up here. We, because there's a large segment of the public, as we're talking about education, that doesn't know the science. I didn't know that, I didn't know that there was great science that went behind this. And so, as we move forward, it's great that we bring these things out so everybody has a little bit of knowledge. And everybody, I find them out at the ballfields in my parking lot. I don't make a big deal of it, we find them. So, we, how, how do you do that? That's probably one of the main, one of the main phone calls, is what do we do about the needles? So, you've answered it. I think it's great. I think, you know, I understand your husband will use four a day. That's for a prescribed item, you know? I'm just, I'm just amazed how much that is, you know, is taken off the streets. I now notice that we're giving away, or they're selling Knox alone or Narcan or however we want to put it on there, that now it's over the counter. So, the other night, we, I had 11 ads for Narcan on the TV, 11. I had to count. Not one asking, "Don't use drugs that could have fentanyl in them." And now I'm saying, "Okay, there's a way to make money off this? We'll just advertise it." So, I think the free Narcan is a great idea. Obviously, the 261 lives saved, some of those are duplicates, you know, from the ones I, you know, talk in law enforcement. So, anyway, it was just a question, so the public had answers and the public had education on why we didn't do a one-for-one, because that's not what we're doing. We want to give them needles so in the long range. And if somebody's ever come down with Hep C or HIV, you'll know the reason we don't want to have that go any farther than it has. Thanks.
All right, thank you. So, we'll go ahead and take a vote. Are we using our tabs or?
It's going to be a roll call.
Okay, no problem. So, let's do a roll call, please.
All right. Supervisor Madron.
Yes.
Supervisor Arroyo.
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson.
Yeah.
Supervisor Bushnell. Supervisor Bone. Thank you. Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you very much. And at this point, we're going to go ahead and break for lunch. And we will be back at 1:15. Give everybody an hour break for their lunch. We'll be back at 1:15. We have one agenda item left and close session after that. So, thank you very much. You got to get this act to it? Welcome, everybody, to our afternoon session. We only have one item left on the agenda other than consent. So, we're going to go ahead and get started with that. And, yes. I'm sorry, it wasn't consent, closed session. Michelle's keeping me on track here today. That's great. Appreciate the assistance, really. Backup is always good. That's what they say in public safety, right? Backup. So, item one is the public hearing to consider adoption of an ordinance, amending and updating the Humboldt County Schedule of Fees and Charges for permits and services of the various Humboldt County Departments. Four-fifths vote required. And we have presenting, first we'll have CIO Hayes.
Thank you, Chair Madron. Today is the presentation on the calendar year 2024, or excuse me, 2324 fiscal year update to the fee schedule. This year in particular, this is really important work because we have experienced a significant increase in our staffing costs, which the update of the fee schedule allows us to capitalize on those increases and ensure that we are charging the appropriate amount for services. So, with us today is Jessica Masil, recently promoted to Deputy County Administrative Officer to present the fee schedule to your board and take any questions you may have.
Well, welcome and congratulations. I believe that, it's a C-word, for sure.
Thank you so much. Good afternoon, Chair Madron and members of the board. I'm here to present the 2023 fee schedule for possible adoption. Is the PowerPoint pulled up? Perfect, thank you. So, the authority for a county to establish increased or decreased fees comes from California Government Code 54985 and allows counties to set fees and charges to recover the reasonably necessary cost for providing a service or for enforcing a regulation. The authority to establish and update planning and land use fees comes from a different section, California Government Code 66016, but with a few differences in effective dates and process for challenging a fee or charge, but is similar in that it is based on recovering the cost of providing the service. The reason we're here today is because both government code sections require at least one public hearing.
And we're going to go ahead and open the public hearing at this point as well. Thank you, Supervisor Bone.
Thank you. So, as I mentioned, for all fees except planning and building fees, they are effective no sooner than 30 days after adoption. So, county practice is the Monday following 30 days, which is Monday, May 29. And then, planning and land use fees require a 60-day period for effectiveness, which would land on Saturday, June 24. So, we will be rolling forward to Monday, June 26. Here's a breakdown of the changes and what the new fee schedule looks like. There are a total of 1,269 total fees represented, of which 49 are proposed to be deleted, leaving 1,220 county fees. Seven are decreasing and 424 are increasing for a total of 431 changed fees. And just a small number, 31 new fees. Eighty percent of the changing fees have less than 10% increase or decrease, and 25% of the increases are less than $5. Some notably high percentage increases that you'll see on the schedule are primarily due to staff reclassifications and the rising cost of supplies with inflation, including the District Attorney's Office, the Assessor, and County Council charges. So, here are some trends over the last five years that display the variety of no change versus new and increased and decreased fees. You'll notice that there are substantial, substantially more increased fees this year. That is due to the economy and the cost of providing services as well as the MOU negotiated salary increases. The, this is a list of the departments that have changed fees. As I mentioned before, there's 424 increases and seven decreases. A large portion of the changes this year are attributed to environmental health, which had not updated its fees last year to account for the negotiated salary increases. And aviation, which has a large number of fees to review and update annually. Some other notable increases, oh, sorry, are that, some other notable changes are that the Public Health Clinic and the North Coast AIDS Project, they had previously utilized reduced rates in order to make the clinic more accessible. But for sustainability of services, have increased fees this year without as much of a reduction. The Public Health Clinic, they still have an established sliding fee scale, though. Planning and building increased several fee deposits. But for clarification on this, they charge for actual costs. And so, the, based on the average costs that the actuals have come in, they are increasing the deposit amounts. And cannabis planning budget unit is going to be closed this next fiscal year, and those fees will be incorporated into another, into other planning budgets as necessary. And finally, Parks and Recreation fees are primarily based on market rate. And so, they are being increased to cover costs while maintaining accessibility. Here is some of the new fees and which departments have new fees. Just some highlights on there. The sheriff created some new fees to break down the fees for basic reports and for corner services to cover costs more appropriately. And Parks and Recreation created new fees to break out and provide discounts to certain groups at Freshwater, such as is done with their other parks. And here are some of the deleted fees. You'll notice the primary source of deleted fees is in the Public Health Clinic. They have reorganized their fee schedule, deleting a number of specifically outlined fees for their sexual health clinic to align with medical reimbursement rates. And that will go along with their annually updated sliding fee scale. So, last week, your board discussed the cost of appeals for the planning department. As the fee schedule is presented today, there is not a change to the fee for appeals. If you would like to incorporate any changes to these fees, staff request direction from your board today. And Director Ford here is to, Director Ford is here to elaborate on that. Thank you.
Thank you. And I just want to bring up that often appeals are a fairly large policy-related issue because the core value of this is making sure that people are not excluded from being able to appeal. If you set an appeal too high, then people are discouraged or unable to appeal in action. If you set it too low, there's no recovery of cost. And so, one of the things that we were looking at based upon the board's discussion last time is that what if we were to, and we can go to the next slide, what if we were to kind of split that and keep the appeal for the public very low, which is essentially where it is right now? It's $1,080. And then, for applicant filed appeals, require them to pay the actual cost of processing that appeal. That would preserve the policy issue of not of really, it's a social justice issue of allowing people to be able to appeal, while also requiring an applicant, if they're going to appeal, to pay the cost of that appeal. And so, we would offer to you an alternative that would modify the fee structure to include two different appeals, one for the public, one for the applicant.
And with that, we'll- And with that, we'll take any questions.
Great. Clarifications, questions from the board? Supervisor Arroyo.
This question, I believe, is for our Director of Aviation, Cody Rogatz, Rogatz, excuse me. I am a little bit unclear on an aeronautical improved and non-improved land and how that fits into the bigger picture. Could you just, and since it's on here, it just is an opportunity to understand that better. Could you, could you talk a little bit about that?
Tess, all right. Thank you for the question, Supervisor Arroyo through the chair. Those two categories are something that we identified in our appraisals that we conducted three years ago. They're pretty standard language in the aviation industry. When you're talking about aeronautical improved land, similar to what John's working with very regularly with developers outside the fence, it's the concept of having your underground utilities already to that area and basically being development-ready. Unimproved would be the same thing inside our fence, except without those utilities where they would be required to be put in to provide needs for a development.
And then these proposed fees, you said it has to do with an appraisal, but could you, it seems low to me for use of property, so I just wanted to understand how you got to those numbers.
Sure. We hired back in 2019, I believe it was, a company that specializes in conducting aeronautical or airport appraisals. They've done so for a few hundred of the airports across the United States. And really, that was to address some shortcomings in our regulatory compliance that had been identified by the Federal Aviation Administration prior to that. So, really trying to ensure that compliance before we were planning to apply for some significant grants that we've been successful with. So, trying to button up our own house, if you will, before trying to improve it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions from board? Supervisor Bushnell?
Dr. Ford? So I have a question about the appeal process. So you are suggesting that the public pay the $1080 and that an applicant pay $3,000. And would it be that the public would pay the $1080 with cause or not cause, and the applicant pay the $3,000 without, please explain?
So, I need to also be clear, the $1080 is only the planning and building fee. There is also money that we collect in an appeal for Public Works, County Council, and I believe Environmental Health. So the actual number is around, would be around $1,500, just to be clear. That is a fee. Once that's collected, no more money would be taken in. With respect to the cost for an applicant, the deposit would be $3,000, plus the other fees that actually go to other departments. So it'd probably be around $3,500. What that would do is allow us to start working on the project. And because it's a deposit, we'd keep track of our time and bill for the actual time. If it doesn't take $3,000, that portion would be refunded. If it costs more than that, we would bill more. There is no provision in there for waiving of fees or modifying fees based upon cause or not cause. If that's something the board wants us to look at, we certainly can.
So I'm a little confused because if an applicant goes to commission and I'm just, you know, it has happened in the past and projects have gotten denied without findings, and the applicant has had to appeal to this board, and they already have spent a ton of money on a project. And it seems not fair. I'm sorry, I'm just, I have to say. And also the public then, that for no justification can say, "Oh, I just don't like it", can then say, "Oh, for less money", at an applicant's cost, because then they have to defend it. Go ahead.
No, if it's a public appeal, that cost is not borne by the applicant. It's only if the applicant appeals. So if it's a public appeal, we're going to do what we do now. We lose money on appeals.
If they appeal it and it comes to this board and it gets shot down at this board, that applicant bears the cost of possibly that project being denied?
Only, in this scenario, it will be only if the applicant appeals it.
Okay.
It's not an appeal by the public. The public appeal would be $1,080. That would be the cost for the public to appeal. And what we're really talking about are two separate fees with two separate initiators. One is the public, one is the applicant appealing their, an action on their project. And that could be by the planning director, by the zoning administrator, or by the planning commission.
Excuse me. I understand that, but there have been projects at planning commission that have failed for lack of findings. And so why, why do you think that the applicant should pay more than a public?
This is really trying to address a discussion that was held with the board, I believe it was last week, in terms of the fact that the, the cost of processing an appeal is far more than what we collect in fees.
No, I do understand all of that.
And so, what this is trying to do is, is balance the struggle with wanting to make sure that we're not economically preventing people from being able to appeal by raising the appeal to full-cost recovery versus an applicant who may be appealing because they don't like a condition. There are circumstances where perhaps they've not had adequate findings made, and so the appeal's justified. And we could put provisions in to either do a fee of waiver, an appeal fee waiver, or a reduction based upon cause. But that's not something that's currently within the fee ordinance.
I guess I'm just not understanding. Do you think an applicant has more money than a public? I don't understand why it wouldn't just be the same.
That's how it is now. And all this is trying to do is address a question that was raised at the last board.
Sure. So why then, why wouldn't the fee just be $1,000 to address that we're not, or $3,000 because we're not hitting the mark on appeals?
I think it can be. This is just an alternative. What's proposed actually before you is a fee of $1,080. That's what's in the fee ordinance right now. This was just added at the last minute, based upon a conversation last week.
Okay.
Okay, Supervisor Wilson?
Do we know, is this a mechanism that's used by any other jurisdictions that we're aware of?
Didn't have time to research that.
Yeah, I would want to know that because I'd want to know if the precedent issue around that would be my concern. I do understand, I mean, that that access to the, to this appeal process and the tiered nature that you're talking about. I mean, when it, when an applicant is coming to us and something has been appealed or has been, has been appealed and they want to, or when an applicant wants to appeal something, they definitely have a stronger vested interest in that process with relationship to whatever that motive is. And typically, these are the, you know, there's, they're seeking an entitlement which has value. On the other side of that, a person from the public, generally speaking, that's not there, that's generally not the motivation. So it is very different. It's just, it's just very different. And so I appreciate what you're getting at. And I actually like the language associated with the ability of the board to then modify that. I think that speaks to where you could have the difference between somebody, you know, a nonprofit that is putting in, you know, something to help animals or something like that versus a large other conglomerate doing some, whatever that is. And so I think that that would, that would help us adjudicate that. But I would want to know if there is precedent for that. That's really, would be my concern. So, there you have it. That's my, that's my thoughts on it. And that would probably not be, I don't know if we could, we could give direction today for something coming back in the future, but that wouldn't be, I mean, we, what you're asking for us today is to hopefully approve what's being proposed with something that might come back. Or do you really think that the language that you have that's specific today could be approved?
Since there's discomfort with what we've introduced today, and so I would not recommend that you try to take action on that today, but give direction in terms of doing that research.
Okay, Supervisor Arroyo?
I have a question about the alternative owner-builder fee schedule that's proposed, or rather, just a clarification. So I see that there's the proposed new fee based on square footage, but then it says remodels, AOB remodels new fee. And I'm just not understanding, based on the different documents we had in our packet, whether that is, in fact, a new addition that has to do with remodels. And that's on page, oh, sorry, this one's not paginated. Well, number 14, page 14 of the, of Item 1B, I believe.
So, this is under 262, correct?
It is under 262, and it's page either 13 or 14. I can't quite tell. And it's labeled AOB fee structure.
Oh, yes, okay. That is extremely confusing. The way that I would interpret that is that for the fee, the basic fee is going up, and then for remodels, if it's associated with a remodel, that would be the fee. So the current fee is what's listed on the right three columns. It's where it says fee. So the first one between 0 and 400 square feet is 16660. That's going up to 180. The remodel fee is not changing.
Okay. And then, is there a, how do people, because they're both based on square footage. I guess if it's new construction, there's the new proposed fee, but what, I guess, how do you define a remodel? Is it like less than 50% of the, of the work will be done? Or, you see where I'm going with this, where the square footage is leading me to be a little bit confused by that?
Right. So, yeah, it would be something where there's an existing structure there if they're adding to it or modifying it in some way. That's, that's the fee.
Okay. Thank you.
Supervisor Wilson?
Is there a remodel provision in AOB?
Yes. And probably three-quarters of the AOBs we process are for remodels.
And then does that then require the process that when the owner moves out or sells, that they then have to bring it in? Do we have a fee for them to bring that back in and us to process that?
No.
So how would we recover costs from that part of the ordinance?
That is something that, it's difficult to say this, but it's never been done.
Right. How would, okay. All right. Well, I mean, if someone decides that they want to come back in and do that, then what is, what would be the process for that?
Right now, that would be an unrecovered fee.
Okay. So in the next iteration of that, could we have a recoverable fee for that service that we've never rendered?
Yes.
Thanks. All right, thank you.
So I actually like your proposal, Director Ford. I do think it's important to allow the public to have a opportunity to be engaged. And price is certainly one of those pieces. Not that I want to put extra burden on applicants, but I do think having the different approaches makes sense. I mean, I think this is one of those areas where fees are incentives and disincentives. You know, it's where we, one of those areas where we as a board can incentivize things that we think are really important, like alternative owner building, for instance. Housing, you know, in general, right? So I think there are always going to be some cases where we really shouldn't be trying to do full fee recovery if we're trying to encourage certain types of things to happen. I mean, there's a market threshold for these things, right, as to, we already see that with AOB or with the AUDs, the accessory dwelling, ADUs, where, you know, we really want to see these happen, but clearly there are disincentives out there that are still keeping people from doing them at the large scale I think we need and would like to see. For instance, if the state had a program where they paid for all the utility hookups for an ADU, I would suggest that that would incentivize the development of a whole lot more ADUs, right? So there are times and places to get full-cost recovery, and there are other places where by recovering less than cost, we're actually making an investment as an incentive towards something we think is important. And I'm not weighing in one way or another on where that is, but I do think that's why that tool exists, right, to incentivize or disincentivize. So, any other comments from the board? Supervisor Arroyo?
Thank you. I just, if we're going to bring back next iteration, I do think it wasn't clear from this report, and I realize there's a ton of fees to capture, but it wasn't clear that the AOB had new rates involved. It just wasn't one of the ones that was highlighted as a change. So I think that was just a fairly minor thing, but something that we'd want to let folks know is changing. And like, in the attachments, it's clear that it's changing, but it wasn't in the overall fee schedule that I saw. So maybe I'm missing something, but in Department 262, I didn't, I didn't see that. But I do concur about making sure that those costs are recovered for the remodel component as well.
Okay, seeing no other comments, questions here at the board, we'll do public comment. And we do have one hand up in Zoom, 7718. This is your opportunity.
I'm in a different location. Can you hear me now?
We can, down in Mexico there, huh?
Yeah, I strongly support what was brought forward by John Ford regarding the appeal process. I can afford to make stand appeals a year, and that's just fine. But it's basically a repetitive process where the public and groups who don't have money may be looking after the environment or something like that. And I agree with Supervisor Wilson's assessment. It only be, it's calling him, but the other people usually have a monetary gain if they receive some, if given an applicant with a, and they'd only be doing it if they had a monetary gain usually. So I totally concur, and I understand that process. I really appreciate that your new staff member supports. I've never seen a destruction anywhere near the job. Probably one tenth of the longest I've ever seen on fees. But I appreciate you wanting to pay attention to it. General comment, I'm quite pleased to see that we are not having everything go up by 15 or 20%. Maybe I can't understand why that's not happening. That seems to be the tuition cost, the labor, insurance, everything involved in it. So hopefully we can keep the fees down to whatever we are. And I appreciate only collecting, you know, exactly or close to. know, exactly or close to an actual cost, so that's what is important. And the one exception, I strongly back, maybe another one or two, but the coastal commission, I believe there's no cost or fee to the coastal commission on certain items, even though they're on environmental issues. If you have a county and speak on your, your new rate.
Thank you, commenter. And anybody here in the audience today who would like to make a public comment? Seeing no one coming forward, Supervisor Wilson?
Well, I have a question around development fees, which we don't have listed in here. But this, is this the schedule with, by which we would have development fees if we were a county that had development fees? Is this where we would have that discussion? No?
No, that, that would come as part of a separate ordinance.
Okay. I mean, because earlier we had, with the Measure Z discussion around, you know, issues around services within the county, and a lot of counties provide services with help, with help with generating income from, from development fees, and we don't have those. And so, we have these other mechanisms that we talk about. Maybe that'd be something we could talk about in the future. I'm happy to make a motion to move forward with the changes as proposed with, I guess, hold on a second, I just have a question. Supervisor Arroyo's questions around the AOB development, or the AOB square footage remodel fee, because is that something that we can do right here and now in terms of an edit? Or is that something that would come back to the board at some other time for clarification?
I think we found what's proposed here to be adequate for the current time.
Okay. So, with that, I'll make the motion that we approve what's been delivered here and to us, that the questions around the AOB fees be addressed in next year's addition of this, and that staff bring back to us a proposal based on the discussion here of an option or two options with relationship to the appeal process.
I'll second. May I make one clarifying comment?
Yes, go ahead.
I, I do, I do want to know, it's not highlighted in red, something that's changed, but it is accurate in the attachment. So, I feel that, that it was just, if someone was scanning the, the entire schedule of fee changes and looking for something new, they might miss that because it just wasn't highlighted. But I do want to say that staff did accurately represent that, those proposed changes. It's just, you kind of have to dig a little bit. And so, in the future, just, you know, it'd be nice if we're like highlighting in red everything that's new, but that, it wasn't an error on behalf of staff. So, thank you.
Okay, we have a motion by Supervisor Wilson, and a second by Supervisor Arroyo. Final comments, Supervisor Wilson?
Just a, I know it was brought up with relationship to the fee around the appeals process, but this is a question for, globally for staff in general, and is, do we see any other fee structure anomalies that we think are significant relative to other communities that have these fee structures? Are we feeling we're caught up in terms of that? Or do we have any indications that we're sort of leaving things on the table that maybe we shouldn't?
Yeah, I, yes and no, is the answer to that. I guess it's, it depends. Planning a building has historically adopted sort of a slow incline towards what is an appropriate fee, because the, the ability for the community to palate what those actual costs might be is, you know, somewhat of a political decision for your board. And so, as planning a building has worked over the years to get these up to a rate that is commensurate with the actual cost, it has been a work in progress. I think actually when John, Director Ford, excuse me, first came on with planning and building, that was a real undertaking that you took in your first years to start that increase, but it's been a slow progression, if that answers your question. And that's just one example. Each department does an evaluation of what's appropriate. And Jessica, you might be able to point to some of the others, because I know there's some that say, like, the actual fee increase should have been 300%, but we're going to go, you know, with a percentage that is palatable for right now. And aviation also, sorry to dip into that, I think has done that a little bit with their leasing schedule to implement those increases over a three-year time period.
For instance, as I noted in the presentation, public health, the sexual health clinic and their immunization schedule, they've previously done a reduction in order to maintain accessibility for the community to the public health clinic. But with the rising costs, they've been moving towards less of a reduction there.
And I, then I have a question for Cody, if I can. Some airports have a fee with relationship to travelers going through. It seems like those are like big airports that we travel through, you see a fee that comes on your ticket. Is that something that happens in municipals and smaller airports as well? And do we fit into that? Are we already doing that?
Yeah, actually, I think what you're referring to is PFCs or passenger facility charges. We have collected on those in the past. We're not right at this moment, because we have some cleanup work to do on that program as well, dating back to 2008. So, staff are actively working on that in conjunction with a PFC specialist consultant to clean that up, and FAA personnel as well. But as far as the main drivers for revenue generation at your large airports, most of them, it's the parking lot. So, I always joke that they're in the parking lot business that just happens to have an airport attached to it. And then, of course, your concessionaires throughout, which is why you see the SFOs and the LAXs of the world looking more and more like a mall that you pass through.
Yeah, Denver was crazy.
Yep.
Okay, so we, so would, would there be a point in which we'll get even like a memo that will let us, give us an update in what the potential might be for us with relationship to revenues? Because I feel like this issue that you, that you have inherited, we may be leaving some significant revenue on the table.
We, we definitely are. We collected up through late last year when the FAA cut us off. So, PFCs is essentially an FAA-approved program that you have to reapply for every five years. And we're working on, as a part of this project, putting that application together. And I will definitely update the board when we're ready to go with that application to make sure that we're applying for, putting those funds that we do collect towards projects that, that you guys see fit. As far as a locally instituted fee on tickets, the FAA won't allow for that. Yeah.
And then, the parking, what's the sunset on our current parking situation?
Great question, actually. That's the email I was working on when Alicia caught me off guard there. We are finalizing the RFP. That should be before your board here in the next four to six weeks for consideration, which will be a selection process that we walk in a similar timeline with the parking lot improvements that we anticipate doing here, starting in a couple of months. So, it'll be possibly a new vendor. We may stick with the same vendor, but certainly improve technology as we rehabilitate the parking lot areas.
So, we're considering, never, well, we can talk about that. Sure. Thank you for the, my, the motion still stands. Thanks.
And I will say that we do have development fees, but they're with school districts. So, school districts apply a development impact fee, I believe. Some do, not all, but I know I've gotten a lot of calls from people building their homes going, what, what's this? You know, it can be several thousand dollars. But we don't, right? Anyway, okay, we have a motion and a second. We've done public comment, so we'll go ahead and do a roll call vote, please.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Bone? Supervisor Bushnell?
Yeah.
Supervisor Arroyo?
Yes.
Supervisor Madron?
Yes.
And Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries 5-0.
Okay, and we now have, not consent, closed session items left on the agenda, and if our county council can read those into the record, and we'll take public comment, and then we'll recess.
Thank you, Chair Madron. It is the intention of the board to meet in closed session pursuant to California Government Code Sections 54954.5 and 54957, in order to consider the public employee performance evaluations for the positions of the clerk of the board and the aviation director. It is also the intention of the board to meet in closed session pursuant to California Government Code Section 54956.9D1, in order to discuss existing litigation in the case of Mercer Frasier Company versus County of Humboldt. Humboldt County Superior Court Case Number CV2201537.
Thank you very much. And we'll go to Zoom first, and we have one hand up, 7718. This is your opportunity for comment. Welcome.
Well, I have only good things to say about the aviation department there. The only thing, hopefully by next year, I'll have even better things to say, we have a better schedule where we can depart and arrive in a correct, correct manner. Thanks to the aviation department for all the support that is necessary to Humboldt County, and I think we, I think we've tried to work on the parking thing out there, it didn't get all sophisticated, but maybe that'll happen by next year when we see a value there. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And anybody here in the audience today that would like to make comment on our closed session? And seeing none, we are recessed, and we should be back, what? An hour or hour and a half?
Hour, hour and a half, probably.
Okay. All right, thank you very much. Great, thank you very much.
Hold on, my audio wasn't, can we do that again? The audio wasn't updated here.
Certainly. Welcome back. We are out of recess, and County Council, can you read into the record any actions that were taken?
Thank you, Chair Madron. There is no reportable action taken with regard to Items J1 through J3.
Thank you very much. And with that, we'll go to our final and very important adjournment item, and that is adjournment item K1, Certificates of Adjournment for Cassidy Bertoldi and Emerald West. And would any board members care to contact, make comment? Excuse me. Supervisor Arroyo.
I just wanted to say I had the pleasure of very briefly meeting in the, in the four months that I've been on the board, meeting both Emerald and Cassidy here in the building, providing new employee orientation, and in my, you know, welcoming me to the board with Cassidy and then with Emerald, I had a nice chat with her in the elevator, just about how much she loved her role working with the sheriff's office, and had a chance to briefly meet her. And so, I just wanted to acknowledge that they were both such valued county employees and community members. And I'll pass it to whoever else wants to speak.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you. I also briefly met them both and want to really extend my sincere love to their families and my condolences as they, their families both mourn them, and, you know, what a tragic passing, and our county organization and staff will surely miss them. Also, I really want to recognize the two county departments that are so impacted by their loss, just their physical loss of how well they were loved, and how traumatic it has been in our organization, in those departments, that they have left a huge void. And from what I've heard, we're surely loved, and just really extend that, that sincerity to their families and to our staff.
Great, thank you, Supervisor Bushnell. And Supervisor Wilson?
Yeah, just sharing my condolences as well with the, with the families. You know, losing folks that are part of the, you know, the county family, the family of public servants, and, and even when you're new and excited about these, this, this trajectory, and even when you've been here a long time, you know, that feeling of camaraderie is real at all levels, and I just, and so, these, this type of loss is really tragic within, within everybody, and especially, of course, the families and, and the closest workers. But we feel it all through the, through, through these, through the whole institution. I did, I didn't know Emerald a bit. She was on soccer team with my kid, and definitely spent some time picking up and dropping off and having times in those spaces, and then also just as, as peers, and seeing her in the community, and a real ray of sunshine all through all of those experiences. And in, you know, in teenagers, a lot of times teenagers can be very, a little off with relationship to other adult, any adults at all whatsoever. That is not the case with this young person, just really engaged and, and, and just putting forth real positivity. And so, it's just, just makes these, these things just so much more tragic. My condolences.
Well, thank you for that. And we have folks here in the audience today, so we'll go out to public comment. If anybody would like to come forward, please. Welcome.
Is this thing on? Hi, I'm Director of Human Resources Zach O'Hannon. I am indirectly was Cassidy Bertoldi's boss. So, I'd like to say a few words about her first. I'll say I didn't know Emerald, but just like you've said here today, I've only heard really good things. And so, just want to share condolences with her family from the HR department, myself, and with the sheriff's office. It's a big loss. Cassidy, I just want to let her family know that she was such a great person. You know, she was an awesome worker, but more importantly, she was a really great person. And I really enjoyed seeing her every day and ribbing each other, and she was really, brought a lot of positivity to the office every single day, no matter how she felt. Always so willing to jump in and help with literally anything at any moment. Again, I, she's just, it, it's terrible that these sorts of things happen to such good people. It's never good that happens to anyone, but it couldn't have happened to a better person. And so, I just want her, her family to know that, that she was really loved in our department by everyone. As you can see behind me, there's a bunch of people here from the HR department, from the payroll division, that really cared about her and wanted to be here. So, yeah, that's, that's all I have to share.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yeah, it is with deepest sympathy that our Board of Supervisors is adjourning in memory of Cassidy and Emerald here today, a loss that cannot be replaced. Any final thoughts, Supervisor Bushnell?
Yeah, just as I look out in the audience and I see her coworkers, it reminds me, you know, the single person that you spend the most time with besides your family is your coworkers, and you grow to love them, you grow to, to know everything about them, you share time with them. And so, as I look at you, ladies and Zach, I know that you're hurting, and we all up here are just feeling your pain. And, you know, you become that person's friend, and it's, you know, you spend so much time with your coworkers, and so, we really recognize that, and with the sheriff's department as well, you know, we have really felt their pain through the last week. And we just really want to say, you know, that we're feeling for you guys, we recognize that, and for the families as well. So, it just really, really are sending our love to you guys.
Thank you for being here, and we are adjourned. Thank you.